Welcome everyone to this April 26 virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council. We're coming back from a closed session. And at this point, could we have, let's see, a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Councilmember Kek.
Here.
Vice Mayor Monroe. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Oh, sorry, forgot to put my little thingy down. Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. Okay, we're all present. Could we now proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Everyone can follow on while I say it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, is there any report of action taken in the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jay Stonkala. No, there's no reportable action taken.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll proceed to the fun part of this, which is the proclamations. We have a couple and some recognitions. So to start with the proclamation declaring May is a drinking water awareness month and have John Freeman and Frank Vallejo, Susan Cordone from, and Rob Sealy with Cal Water to accept the proclamation. So with that, I'll start going through the, I'll show it and then I'll start reading it. So here, here we, again, we have, we always have the, I don't know if you can see it, a lot of reflection in there. But what we have is proclaiming Drinking Water Awareness Month, May 2021. And whereas water is one of the most valuable natural resources that provides public health protection and the measures of a successful society are in some way related to access to safe water. And whereas Livermore residents and businesses are encouraged to help protect waterways from pollution, use water wisely, become involved in local water issues and whereas the city of Livermore is a member of the American Water Works Association, which for more than 40 years has recognized the importance of public drinking water systems each May, each May, now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore proclaims the month of May, 2021, as Drinking Water Awareness Month, recognizing the vital role tap water plays in daily life and the importance of essential of water professionals working behind the scenes to provide safe drinking water to the community. So thank you all for what you do and we'll be getting the proclamation to you. Would any of you like to say a few words? You may.
Yes, Mayor, this is John Drinking Water Service. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sorry, I thought my background would, I thought my picture would have came up of my background, but it's only the screensaver. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to Mayor Warner and the Livermore City Council for acknowledging May as a Drinking Water Awareness Month. And I proudly accept the proclamation on behalf of California Water Service and the city of Livermore. As you all may know, Cal Water and the city have partnered for many years to promote water conservation. Cal Water has also been preparing for the drought and climate change and we are committed to ensuring a reliable water supply both now and in the future. Livermore residents and businesses have done an excellent job conserving water when needed. We appreciate their efforts and are here to help them save water every day. With two dry years now in a row, it's especially, we especially encourage our customers to use water wisely to help preserve California's limited water supply. Again, I want to thank, thank you for this recognition and we look forward to our continuing, ongoing partnership. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all you do. So the next item is 2.2 and it's going to be declaring a fair housing month. And Barbara Clemens from the East Bay Association of Realtors will be present to accept the proclamation. And again, we have a nicely framed proclamation. And we will be getting it to you shortly. So that I'd like to to proceed with reading it. It's declaring Fair Housing Month, April 2021. And whereas the Fair Housing Act passed by Congress on April 11, 1968, enshrined into federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And, you know, based on race, color, region, sex, familial status, national origin and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to further fair housing in their communities. And whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated. And whereas the city of Livermore is committed to fair housing, opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of Livermore. Now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore, in recognition of the 1968 Fair Housing Act, proclaims April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in Livermore. So thank you. And Barbara, would you like to say a few words? You may.
Yes, I would, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Mayor Warner, as city council members and city staff. So on behalf of the Bay East Association of Realtors, I appreciate the opportunity to participate in this presentation. I'm Barbara Clemens, a professional realtor and chair of the Bay East Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Action Committee. So this evening, I'm here virtually to accept the resolution proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month. So we appreciate the city of Livermore recognizing the importance of keeping fair and equal access to housing top of mind for Livermore residents. This resolution is a powerful symbol of that commitment and I accept it with this promise that Bay East will continue to ensure that all who seek to become homeowners are provided fair, equitable and professional help from our members. We also promise to partner with the city of Livermore in any initiatives to further the principles of fair housing. So again, thank you for this resolution and we look forward to working together with the city of Livermore. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. And we're definitely looking forward to working with you. And it's a very timely topic on the fair housing for us and very important. So thank you for all you do.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And we'll be getting the document over to you shortly.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm on to item 2.3. And this is a very interesting one. It's, it's a mayor's commendation and it's being presented to Regina Irene Molotaurus for winning the California State Competition for the American Legion National Oratorical Contest. And Regina Molotaurus is a junior at Granada High School. And she's representing the Livermore American Legion Post 47. And Regina won the local district and area American Legion speech contest and went on to win first place in the state competition. And in a non-COVID year, she would have competed next against the best in the nation for the national championship. And so excellent and it's wonderful to be able to give her, Regina, this mayor's commendation. And I'll read that. And it's commendation to Regina Irene Molotaurus, April 26, 2021. And now, just what happened to me, I've had the up there and the, what I was going to say on my screen and Zoom came in and took it over from me. So I have a little bit of problem here, but I'll proceed here. The, it's in recognition for winning first place in the 2021 American Legion Department of California Oratorical Competition for oratory titled Freedom Isn't Free: The Duties and Obligations of Citizenship in the USA. In the 83 years of the competition, this is the first time that a Livermore or Alameda County student has won the high school oratorical state competition. Regina placed first in each of the first four levels of the contest. Congratulations on this major accomplishment. Thank you for representing the city of Livermore, Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District, the American Legion Post 47 and the students and teachers at Granada High School. So wonderful job, really, it's incredible. So thank you so much for having done it and we'll be getting your commendation over to you shortly. If you'd like, you may say, if you're here, you could, you could also say a few words.
Yes, hi, I'm Regina Molotaurus. And I would just like to thank Post 47 for, you know, giving me this opportunity to enter the oratory contest. I definitely made memories I'm gonna keep forever. And also through it, I would also like to thank my father. He helped me every step of the way. You know, he was there by my side and, you know, he just really was my number one supporter. Then also my mom. But then I also like to thank the council and the mayor for giving me this award. And I just want to say I'm truly honored. And I hope next year to definitely go to the nationals and hopefully win first place. So thank you again, and I am truly honored.
Oh, and I'm sure you will win. So great job and we're all rooting for you. I see a few council members would like to say a few words as well, like Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Regina, Ms. Molotaurus. That's awesome accomplishment. Really proud that you're the first in Livermore and Alameda County. And I'm also wondering whether you might provide any tutoring to any of your local elected or appointed officials. We, I'm sure we all could learn a lot from you, but just wanted to say congratulations. Really, really proud that you, that you came from Livermore and Granada is my son's alma mater. So go Matadors. Thanks very much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Similar congratulations, although my, my daughter went to Livermore High, so go Cowboys. I don't know. What I'm wondering is, is it possible to get a copy of the speech? I would love to read it.
Um, yes, I do believe that is possible.
That would be great. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, fantastic. Anyone else? Okay, well, wonderful. And as I say, we're all rooting for you. So we're on to item 2.4. The Bob Gausman Commission for the Arts Chair is, will provide a update.
Good evening, council members. Good to see you. It's been a great year for art despite the pandemic. As you all are well aware, Livermore is a really powerful supporter of the arts. There are over 15 active groups that are active in Livermore. Music, painting, dance, theatrical productions, opera, literary heritage. It's really, really a statement of the quality of life here in Livermore, that we've got such an active arts community. During our year, we, we ordered, we, we provided program grants, four different program grants for art activities in the city. Too many grants. The Stockman's Park bronze sculpture was inaugurated with great fanfare and it's really becoming a showpiece of our city. We had a wonderful mural festival that's still evident throughout the city. I hope you've all had a chance to see those. We also approved the Pillars of Unity sculpture at Vasco Road and Las Pascidas Road. And we enlarged our arts commission to the full capacity. We've added three new commissioners. We represent a little bit more diversity in our city, young and old and all over geographically. Coming up, we have the Spring Art Show in April, the High School Senior Awards. We just today chose 10 high school seniors for $600 scholarships for their work in their high school art programs. Wonderful to see that. And probably of most interest to you as, as council members will be that we really have kicked off our 10-year cultural arts vision. You addressed that recently in one of your meetings when you approved the contract to Art Builds Community. And that's pretty exciting because it will really provide a roadmap that coordinates our arts and economic development with the city goals for the next 10 years. So I'm really pleased to see that taking place. I'm excited. You'll see a lot of inter, public input sessions by Art Builds Community. We're looking at a vast array of input. We want inclusion, equity, diversity throughout our city. We want to hear from all of our citizens. What is it you want from art? And how can we best, how can a city best support your artistic endeavors in our community? So I want to thank you for your time. Any questions?
Okay, well, thank you for your time and everything you all do. And it's pretty wonderful, all the things that have been happening. Are there any other comments from the council? I don't see any. Oh, Vice Mayor Monroe.
I will add my thanks, but I also wanted to give a little bit of a shout out specifically to Mr. Gausman for a somewhat related item, which is that you've just done an awesome job with that LCAC website, sir.
Oh, thank you. That's, that's really integral to providing the information to the citizens. And I neglected one thing, which I'm really a miss, so I'm glad you stepped in, Vice Mayor. Our poet laureate has just been phenomenal, Cynthia Patton. She is a go-getter. And even in the year of the pandemic, she's consistently coming up with activities around literary arts and poetry. I just watched yesterday, she did a wonderful idea of poetry and science combination. She had a contest. She had hundreds of entries and awarded prizes to winning students who wrote, students and adults who wrote poetry around the theme of science. It's a great mesh. And as you know, in downtown Stockman's Park, in the future, we will have the Quest Science Museum right adjacent to the Black Box Theater. So I want to make sure and mention Cynthia, our poet laureate. She's been doing a terrific job.
Okay, well, thank you. And, you know, the arts are vital part of the quality of life here. So what you do is great. So looking forward to the next update and more good stuff. So we're now on to Citizens Forum. And I, before we officially open Citizens Forum, I want to make a, a couple of comments because there is some confusion. Want to clear that up. I, I want to note that the city has received a number of email comments that want to talk about the Planning Commission's recommendation on the Eden Housing Project as part of Agenda Item 6.3. And to be clear, Agenda Item 6.3 is not about the Eden Housing Project. The Eden Housing Project will be presented to the city council at its meeting on May 24. Agenda Item 6.3 is to discuss the city's commitment to a culture of welcome, inclusion and respect. And what I believe to be insensitive comments made by Planning Commissioner Stein. I added Agenda Item 6.3 to have a conversation with my fellow council members about our commitment to inclusion and how we as the council reinforce that culture with members of all our advisory bodies, as well as to give members of the community a chance to voice their concerns about Commissioner Stein's comments. To reiterate, Agenda Item 6.3 is not about the Eden Housing Project. Therefore, since the Eden Housing Project is not on the city council's agenda for discussion tonight, any comments about that project should be voiced now during Citizens Forum. Also, the city clerk has added the email comments to that portion of the agenda. However, comments about the city council's culture of inclusion and whether Commissioner Stein comments fit with the city council's vision for inclusion can be made during Agenda Item 6.3. That said, we'll begin to open the Citizens Forum. And what we do is allocate a half an hour to Citizens Forum from the time we start at 7:20 now. So that means we'll close this portion of Citizens Forum at seven, no later than 7:50. 7:45, the city clerk will give the five-minute warning, will take two other comments. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll reconvene Citizens Forum. Hope that's clear. Madam City Clerk, could you please tell people how to participate in the Citizens Forum?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand as soon as the item is introduced. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce a conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, with that, can we have members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda items for which we will not be deliberating this evening?
Honorable Mayor, we currently have one public comment. That is from Michigan Ghost. Michigan Ghost, please unmute yourself.
Hello? Hello? Yeah, hi, my name's Roger Logan. We've been homeowners here since 1988. The draft Climate Action Plan, the CAP, has some good ideas and could add many more, such as more real-world examples of solar roofs, low water landscaping, et cetera, with specifics and costs. However, much of the draft Climate Action Plan is a fiscal train wreck. It needs a course correction now. The problem is mandating $75,000 of electrification upgrades to existing homes. At the 7 April CAP Zoom meeting, I sent in a Q and A as an action. Action. Mandates for existing homes all need to come out before the next draft suspends one May. These mandates cost $75,000 per homeowner, a prohibitive cost for many. It is also completely unnecessary and unwise to eradicate natural gas from existing homes. If you disagree, show me the math of the path from our 2-degree C limit for the earth to where USA homeowners need to give up natural gas in existing homes. Certainly, you must have such an analysis. The CAP response, sure, there's costs, but the cost of not doing anything is greater, I guess. I repeat it, show me the math that justifies $75,000. There was no reply. City Council, can you help the CAP through its time of crisis? It's silly to ruin our economy with $75,000 mandates while China builds new coal plants. The USA can take its arable share of CO2 from 178% today down to 100% without banning natural gas in homes. Banning natural gas from every home in the USA will accomplish nothing except to cause massive energy poverty. Since the 7 April CAP meeting, I've continued to develop my own climate model, the Green Real Deal, and discuss the issue with local and international climate groups. From that, I've developed a BCR, Benefit Cost Ratio, for these mandates for existing homes. The BCR for these mandates is 0.03. This is a classic value for a thing you would never do. Projects with pathetic BCRs like this do not happen in the real world because the result is typically bankruptcy. This is the customer's money, the resident homeowners of Livermore. Please take the mandates out. Thank you very much.
The remaining speaker is Carl Wenti. Carl Wenti, please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Carl Wenti and I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the city council and city staff, city council for being willing to serve our community of the people, by the people, for the people. And good government takes dedicated folks that are willing to give their time to this process of this experiment of this democratic republic that we have. City staff all the way through, thank you all for what you do to continue to design, build, make, keep Livermore a phenomenally awesome place to live and grow up and raise your kids and have fun and enjoy the arts and the beautiful things of this world. So thank you all so much. Those who wear a badge and protect us, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it. That is all.
The next speaker is Anne Brown, followed by Scott Low. Anne Brown, please unmute yourself.
Hi. For the proclamation for Earth Week Tri-Valley that you presented at the last meeting in April. I was able to bring the proclamation to the farmer's market and proudly share it with many of the people that stop by our table for citizens' climate education tri-valley. In the farmer's market, I found a really vibrant community of people eager to learn more about how they could reduce the impacts of climate change. Next to me was the city staff from the planning department, willing and eager to talk with passersby about the Climate Action Plan draft update and dispel misinformation. This was really valuable. Some wonderful things have come out of these encounters at our farmer's market. For example, Western Star Nurseries has donated five native trees. And with the help of Glenn Sherman at the Livermore School District, we've located new homes for these trees in five of the schools and we are eagerly planning tree planting ceremonies. This will be a launch of what we hope will be more opportunities to plant trees for their cooling effect, shade their carbon intake and of course, beauty and habitat in especially our most impacted neighborhoods affected by high heat days. Many of our residents live in older housing with no air conditioning and they really suffer when the temperature goes over 90 degrees. So I want to, again, thank you very much for your support for Earth Week Tri-Valley and look forward to another great experience next year. Meanwhile, stay tuned for more exciting things on our city ecological front. Thank you.
The next speaker is Scott Low. Scott Low, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my concerns about that KESI Air to Livermore Airport. I strongly agree with KESI Air, has they moved to Livermore Airport? But I know there's some among the people, they feel about the noise problem. But I know that will also happen in other cities. But I saw the city near to growth. They don't, it's not necessary. They have to, they have to remove the airport and to satisfy for small amount of people. So I really hope when they make a decision on the KESI Air to move, if they, they let it to move forward, that's no problem to me. But if they, they don't want them to move in, I hope they can allow every, every residence to, to vote on this one. I live in Suprentown since 2010 and I really hope I can vote for, I want to vote for yes. Yeah, I just hope it can be fair and I expect KESI Air move to Livermore Airport. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, so close the public comment period and we're on to Agenda Item 4, the Consent Calendar. Does anyone want to discuss any particular item in, especially? Or shall we have a motion to, on the consent calendar? Councilmember Kek.
Um, Councilmember Banano, I need to abstain from 4.1.
Oh, I missed that. You say you're moving it?
No, 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 Councilmember. No, 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 Councilmember Banano and I
Oh, yeah, you guys have to, right.
Abstain from four point one, so can we just do that separate?
Okay, good, okay, so we'll, I have a motion on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Is there any public comments on the consent calendar?
Oh, right, okay, sorry. Are there any comments, public comments on the consent calendar?
And no comments have been received.
Okay, open and close the public comments. Thank you, city attorney. With that, can we have a motion, appropriate motion to get through this? Councilmember Carling.
Yes, I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay. Vice Mayor Monroe, let me get to.
I, can we amend that to item four point two through the rest? I believe four point one. Oh, wait, no, it's, it's, yeah, I second, never mind. Oh, wait, no, it needs to be two separate motions, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to amend Councilmember Carling's motion to four point two through the end with four point one being separate.
Okay, Councilmember Carling, are you okay with that?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, moved and seconded. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano has abstained for the record. Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kick has abstained for the record. Vice Mayor Monroe?
No, no, wait, I think we're doing four-two to the end, so I don't think any of them are.
Oh, I apologize, Mayor. Councilmember Banano?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kick?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. So, can we pass this unanimously, four-two to the end? So, can we have a motion on four-one, please? It looks like. Okay.
I'll move.
Wait a minute, I thought you were abstaining from it. Oh, no, not you, no, it's the other ones, I'm sorry, okay. I'll get, okay, so it's moved by Vice Mayor Monroe. Okay, it's seconded by Councilmember Carling, I take it. So then, okay, we have a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Banano abstains for the record. Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kick abstains for the record. Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. And so I think we're on to agenda item. That, so that one passed unanimously, you know, with abstention. So then, we're on to public hearings, agenda item five dot one, Resolution Approving the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs Annual Action Plan for FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents for the submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So with that, can we have the staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to introduce Claudia Young, our Human Services Program Manager, who's going to lead us through our presentation on this item this evening. Claudia?
Thank you. Evening, Mayor, Council, and the public. My name is Claudia Young, and I'm the Human Services Program Manager. The item before you today is the Federal Action Plan for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one, and this is going to be a public hearing. This is an overview of the action plan. As a reminder, the city is an entitlement recipient to the CDBG funds from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. HUD defines the process by which the community needs are identified and resources are allocated. As a member of the Alameda County Home Consortium, the City of Livermore also receives annual funding from home funds. Its national objectives include benefiting low and moderate-income persons, assisting in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight, and meeting an urgent need that poses an immediate threat to health and safety. Its priority needs include creating an economic, or creating economic opportunities, creating suitable living environments, and providing decent housing. So this is the timeline of our action plan. We started with a grant application workshop for applicants in December of twenty twenty. Then, staff released the Notice of Funding Availability Request for Proposal, January eighteenth of twenty twenty-one. The applicants provided presentations to our Human Services Commission in February of twenty-one. And our Human Services Commission made grant recommendations on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. And today, we're here with the public hearing for council approval and recommendations. Thank you. The CDBG entitlement is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen, and the home city allocation is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight. On February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, HUD provided the final CDBG and home allocation for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. These totals reflect a decrease of two and a half percent to the CDBG allocation and one percent to the home allocation. Human Services Commission and staff recommend the city council adopt a resolution approving the Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one Annual Action Plan for the Home Investment Partnership and Community Development Block Grant Programs, and authorize its submittal to Alameda County for inclusion with the Alameda County Home Consortium Report and submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. In addition, we would like for you to authorize the city manager or his designated to sign all related documents and to make adjustments to the action plan as needed based on the HUD allocation. That is the conclusion of my presentation, and I'm here for questions.
Okay, does anyone from the council have a question? Okay, I don't, oh, Vice Mayor Monroe?
Sorry about that, you know, you're just going to get me every time, probably. I just wanted, so first of all, I, I am not happy to see that we have a decrease since the need is ever-growing, particularly at this time, but it is what it is. I also want to just note that this is an example of where we, as a city, are receiving funds from the federal level. We work with, you know, we, this is, this is one way that we are able to help those in our community who are in need of help through state funding, through federal funding, through county funding, and also through city funding. But this is, it's worth paying attention to just because this is what we're getting from the feds at this time. That just, that's, that's all I got to say.
Okay, we're in the question period at the moment. Did you have a question?
Sorry, no, that was not a question, that was a statement. Move it.
Okay, well, you can keep it, but the, just, that's where we're at. Councilmember Banano, do you have a question?
Yes, I, I would like to actually just understand if there's a known reason why the, why these funding streams were decreased. Was it overall the federal programs decreased, or was it something that by the time the money gets to us, it was less than usual?
Overall, the federal CDBG was decreased across the board.
Okay, and no, no, no known reason why in a pandemic year like this, when people have greater needs of funding for this, went down?
No, they did not give us this.
Okay, thank you, that's what I needed.
Okay, no further questions. I'll open the public comment on this item at this point, or do we have any public comment?
And no comments have been received.
Okay, we'll close it. Any further observations, comments from the council on this item? Councilmember Banano?
Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, thank staff for this, and also the Human Services Committee. They did a great job allocating money this year. I, a lot of the detail for the total package for these kinds of things was in item four eleven of our consent calendar. And if you looked at that, you'd see just the amount of how well distributed to so many important services in the city, these dollars were. It's kind of a daunting to see how many needs there are, but what a good job it seems that the Human Services Commission, along with the staff, did in distributing it. You know, relatively speaking, there's always more need than there is money, and I just feel like they did a good job. And it was very, this is the first time I had a chance to look at that action plan and all the, all the items on it. I just really appreciate it and know, know that our community members that receive these funds in various ways, I'm sure really benefit from it and appreciate it. So I just wanted to pass that along.
No, I'd like to second those comments as well. Any other comment? If not, could we have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, that was Vice Mayor Monroe that moved the, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? If not, we can have a roll call.
Councilmember Banano?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kick?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. Passes unanimously, thank you for that. We're on to item five dot two. Hearing to receive protests and direct staff to proceed with the field abatement work under the twenty twenty-one Fire Hazard Abatement Program. We have the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'd like to introduce our fire marshal, Ryan Rucker, who's going to lead us through this item. Ryan?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. On March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, the city council adopted Resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, zero thirty-five, declaring existing conditions of growing weeds, accumulated refuse, rubbish, or dirt on private properties, streets, parkways, and sidewalks adjacent to each parcel of real property are a public nuisance and should be abated. Parcel owners have been advised of, to abate weeds and debris which constitute fire hazards. Abatement standards have been mailed to owners or posted conspicuously on their property in cases where a mailing address was insufficient. Property owners can avoid enforced enforcement by the city by completing abatement work in accordance with guidelines or protest the need to abate hazards at this public hearing. The costing curve for nuisance abatements and any assessments will be confirmed by the council at a future meeting. Staff recommends that the city council consider any and all protests, and if council finds it appropriate, adopt a resolution overruling protests and direct staff to proceed with necessary wood abatement on our parcels requiring abatement. Staff is available for questions.
Are there any questions from the council at this point? If none, I'd like to open this for the public comment. Do we have any members of the public that wish to comment?
And no comments have been received.
Okay, we'll close the public comment on item five dot two. I sort of have a question or a comment, but it's my impression over the years that we've done this that for the most part, the community is very conscientious in getting the job done. And then, we have to notify a few, and they, and most of them comply. And then, there's generally a handful in which we then have to actually take action. Is, is that a correct impression?
That is correct, Honorable Mayor. Compliance is normally north of ninety-nine percent, and usually, we just end up with a handful, and some of those comply in the end as well.
So I would like to just take this opportunity, just say thank you to the community for being so compliant. It really is helpful. And, and in this world now, it's really important with all the hazards we have out there. So, thank you. Any other comments at this point? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Monroe?
I'll second.
Great, any discussion of the motion? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Banano?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kick?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. Passes unanimously, thank you. We're on to item, agenda item six, category six dot one, the oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID-nineteen emergency and his accompanying wonderful slide set.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your Director of Emergency Services, and I'm proud to show off the slide set that staff has put together this evening. So first, let's start off with, you know, some good news overall. Our cases from their peak in January continue to be substantially lower than they were at that time. So, we, on the one hand, our, our case rates are not decreasing further. They're essentially stabilized and moving slightly up or down in a particular given day or week. But they, unlike a lot of places in the United States, we are seeing absolutely no evidence of a resurgence. So that's profoundly good news for us as we very much want to get all of our businesses back fully open. We want to get all of the activities in the community fully back into swing. So this is very good news because there's been a substantial reopening of the community during the last couple of months and a lot more economic activity out there in the community as we've moved from the purple tier through the red tier to the current orange tier. Currently, our total case count in Livermore is four thousand, one hundred and eighty-four, and you can see our seven-day rolling average there is two point four one. In Alameda County, you see both the tiers across the top there, the purple, red, orange tier, which we're in, and then the yellow tier. And you see that our adjusted case rate has been pretty stubborn, right around the three point three to three point five range. So while that's clearly, you know, in the orange, and we've not threatened to move out of that orange tier, it's not dropped to the level it needs to, to get into the yellow tier. And you can see what the threshold is for that, which is less than one case per day, per hundred thousand population on an adjusted basis. And of course, the results are adjusted based on the amount of testing you do within the county. And our county has fantastic testing throughout the county, so our case rate is actually adjusted downward slightly by the standards. Our overall test positivity rate and our lowest HBI quartile tests both fall within the ranges for yellow. So if we could get that last stubborn bit of cases to abate and drop just a bit, we could find ourselves in the yellow tier. And that would allow further opening of businesses that have had limitations placed on them during the pandemic. The California Blueprint for a Safer Economy was adopted by the governor, and on June fifteenth, we will move from our current four-tier system that you have to a full reopening, assuming that the two standards that the governor has set are met, which is that there is equitable and widespread vaccine availability and a consistent low burden of disease, especially for those who have been vaccinated. And so far, we appear to be absolutely on track to meet those two standards on June fifteenth. Vaccine availability continues to improve slowly over time in Alameda County. And to date, our hospitalizations are very stable and at the low end of the range. So, good news on both of those. That also appears to be the case throughout the state, although there is a little bit of activity in Southern California that health officials are keeping an eye on. We talked just a moment ago about our testing, and you'll see there, if you add up all of those numbers on the screen, that during, since the beginning of the pandemic, we have conducted more than forty thousand COVID tests at these publicly available sites within the Tri-Valley, and more than seventy-six hundred tests right here in Livermore at two different sites. One at Los Peseas College, which has been open since January twenty-second, and one at Stanford Healthcare on Stanley Boulevard, where since April first, we've completed more than five hundred tests. So, testing is available at those two sites. It's available at the Valley Care Center either with a physician referral or without. So there really is not a barrier to getting a COVID test if you think you need one. So let's move on to the vaccination data here. So this is a screenshot taken from the county's COVID website, which is very informative. And you can see now countywide, more than two-thirds of sixteen-year-old and above, so adults plus sixteen, seventeen-year-olds, have received a first dose of a vaccine. So that's a really impressive number, and more than forty percent of that same population are fully vaccinated. And of course, that's, that's having a major impact as we've seen on those sort of curves you saw in the earlier slides. And it's also what's keeping our, our numbers stable. So you see here in Livermore, our numbers are just a little bit behind the countywide. So you see here in Livermore, our numbers are just a little bit behind the countywide averages there. But we're also doing a really good job, and we'll talk about that in just a minute, reaching out to some of our harder-to-vaccinate populations. So we're very proud of that activity and the partnership of the local three agencies here in the community, your school district, your park district, and your city, partnering with both private sector partners, Walgreens and Safeway, as well as public sector, California OES and the federal government. So how do we outreach? And the answer is a whole variety of ways. The city website is really a great resource to know everything from where we are to where you can go get a vaccine. We do social media posts, and we have put out information essentially about where local points of distribution are, what the rules are, transportation, a variety of information over time. And then we even went old school this past week and passed out hard copy flyers to more than two thousand residents in one of our hardest-hit neighborhoods north of downtown. We were concerned that some of those households don't have full internet capability and connectivity. And in fact, that was actually a very successful situation, as you'll see here on some of our information on this slide. So the vaccine point of distributions have happened at the regional facility at Alameda County Fairgrounds. And of course, that's a large-scale drive-through appointment only, and that's actually being provided by Stanford Healthcare, Valley Care, and Sutter Health. And those two entities are also providing vaccines on behalf of Alameda County Public Health as well. So you don't need to be a member of those two healthcare systems to get a vaccine at that center. If you do ultimately get a appointment there, you can come whether you're insured or not, or whether you have a different insurance company than those two there. We've had several now local points of distribution held at the Robert Livermore Community Center. And we had one by Cal OES recently in FEMA. That's a cooperative team. And we did first-dose appointments on April fifteenth. And the second doses for the Safeway pharmacies, three dates that we had, are happened on the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth, as well as coming up on the thirtieth. Maynison Park sits in the middle of one of our hardest-hit neighborhoods within the community. And so we were able to bring the Cal OES FEMA mobile vaccination centers to that location. So it allowed people in that area to do walk-ups, and actually, we had a whole number of walk-ups. We did first-dose appointments on April sixteenth, seventeenth, and again on Saturday, on the twenty-fourth. On the twenty-fourth was unique because Cal OES brought out two full teams. So that, normally, we have a cap of about five hundred vaccines that we can administer a day. On that particular day, just because the scheduling happened just right, we were able to vaccinate over eight hundred people on that day, and that was with a day and a half notice. So we were pretty proud of the outreach effect we did. We did get a lot of folks from that neighborhood. So that was a very successful day. And of course, if you notice there, that's in addition to the pod that was going on the very same time over at RLCC. So there was a lot of places to get a vaccine, either a second dose or a first dose this last Saturday. And we'll continue to partner, both with state and federal government and with local providers, until vaccine supply is more normalized and it's easy to essentially just walk into your Walgreens or Safeway and get an appointment. And I think we're not too far away from that time. You know, our filling up of the appointments is starting to slow just a little bit. And you can see now that almost two-thirds of Livermore residents have a first shot. So I think we are, in the coming weeks, going to start to see that pace slow just a little bit. Switching over to our financial assistance and a quick update on that. Of course, you'll remember that the council has designated more than two million dollars in support for small businesses. And you can see the status there on our Small Business Assistant Grant Program. More than six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars has been awarded. The CARES Act Grant Program in cooperation with Alameda County has expended, you know, more than two-thirds of a million dollars there. The gift program, the e-gift program, has been, seventy percent of those gift certificates have been allocated. And just to give you a sense of scale, that translates in to over four thousand six hundred individual e-gift certificates. So that's a tremendous support from the community, buying gift certificates that immediately provide value to our local businesses. So those dollars immediately go to the local businesses. Of course, the city's participation means that the e-gift certificate program is free both to the business and to anyone getting an e-gift certificate. So we pay for all of that administration overhead. And in addition to that, if you do buy a forty-dollar or a seventy-dollar gift certificate, seventy-five-dollar gift certificate, the city will kick in a bonus on that. So that has been a very successful program. We continue to expend those. We see those dollars going out fairly steadily. And it looks like we've got at least a few more weeks, and maybe as much as a month more on that, depending on the pace there. You can see our rental assistance program, and we are just coordinating that distribution of that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars with county allocations and four hundred and nine thousand dollars of commercial rent abatement matching program. And we received forty-three applications. This actually is a, is not only a popular program with our local residents, it's been a very popular program with other communities who have reached out to us to see how we've actually structured this. So from that perspective, we've, we've done a lot of great work. In addition to the financial incentives, of course, the city completely rewrote how we do outdoor dining and outdoor activity in our downtown and throughout the community over the last year. And now we're in the process where, at one time, of course, all indoor dining was prohibited. And of course, we're now moving back into the range where indoor dining is permitted, where indoor retail activities have less restrictions on them. So as the needs in the community change, we're reaching out to our local businesses throughout the community, but concentrating on downtown and seeing how are we doing and how do we implement next steps? So you can see there that we sent out a survey, and almost two-thirds of the respondents were restaurants because we didn't want to get a, a good breakdown of sort of business types because needs do vary across the different businesses that are located within the community. So one of our fundamental questions is, how do we progress from where we are to a more stable situation moving forward? And you can see there that we had a divergence of opinion on exactly what the perfect answer is with our flex zones. So of course, you know, one of the first pieces of the puzzle is that the tents that are temporary in nature do need to start coming down. The state fire code prohibits us from having those up for longer than six months. Because we did have a pandemic, we were able to stretch that time just a little bit. We did a whole series of inspections of every one of those for safety. But those do need to come down by the end of May. So then the question is, what should we do in those spaces as those tents come down? And you can see, the answer ranges, depending on who you ask, from keep things just the way they are to have a dramatic changeover of those areas back into parking. And so, or some combination of the two. And of course, we have a lot more of our parking downtown taken up by the flex zones because we used to use about twenty-four diagonal spaces, and that's grown to more than fifty-nine total public parking spaces on First, J, and K. One of the other items we asked was about time limits, and there was some divergence of opinion on that as well. So of course, we're going to do this as your staff over a series of months, and we're going to adjust things little by little. So the first thing, of course, is for us to have conversations with those businesses that no longer need either all of the flex zone area or some of the flex zone area. And where they don't need it any longer, we'll make the adjustments and return those areas to parking. This is very high-value convenience parking for our retail establishments downtown. And so from that perspective, we want to make sure that every square inch down there, especially on First Street, is very well utilized all of the time. The next step that we're going to do is take a look is, as the restrictions on indoor dining and indoor retail are finally completely eliminated over time, then we'll go through a stepwise process. Again, one of the major reasons that we had the outdoor flex zones is because, of course, indoor dining was prohibited. So from that perspective, moving back to a more balanced indoor and outdoor capability is what our goal is here. We'll be looking with and meeting with the local businesses over the next few weeks in coming up with that plan, trying to tailor it to the different needs of different areas within downtown. In some areas, there's a little more need, and in some areas, there's a little more flexibility. So we'll be working with the businesses as we move through that overall. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the overall status that we have.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Carling?
Yes, thanks, Mark. I appreciate the report and glad we're doing as well as we are, but I'm just curious. We seem to be lagging in terms of percent of vaccinated folks in Livermore, lagging nearly every community in Alameda County. Do you know if they're, they are doing something? We're not? Can we learn something from them in terms of increasing the number, our percentage of people vaccinated?
Well, we certainly are always looking for, for very good ideas. In fact, your staff has actually been more aggressive than most communities in Alameda County because I think we do have larger numbers of harder-to-reach people. And part of that just, it, it just ranges with the economy. The other item is that some of our hardest-hit communities in Alameda County really have had extraordinary intervention by the federal government. Of course, Oakland is the example of having a regional pod sitting right in the center and back there, mobile units concentrating a lot of time on the Oakland-Hayward-Fremont corridor there. You know, and say, do certainly have some of the hardest-hit communities in that area, so that makes sense from an overall county standpoint. The numbers of, you know, we've noticed as well, your staff, on that. And so for that reason, we have been pushing with our partners at the county and Cal OES and FEMA to provide more opportunity for the, the points of distribution. So from that perspective, the other thing is, we just switched some of our strategies with this last pod is to actually expand our avenues of outreach. So if we do have connectivity or other issues, we also have a couple of things that are coming up. We're working with the Lucille Packard Foundation in Tri-Valley to target our students who are now eligible, the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, and provide opportunities for them to get vaccinated through a special appointment system at the fairgrounds. And then the other item is working on our homebound residents. You'll remember that that process was about ready to take off, and the county did just a bit of a postpone on that. So we continue to follow up with them very much in that area. And we'll continue to take a look at our numbers. At this point, it does really seem to be a little bit of supply and access. We think really in the next couple of weeks, it's going to come down to ensuring that we have good messaging out there to make sure that everybody who wants a vaccine really does get one. So, and we're continually chatting with the, with the county on this one. So we don't exactly have the answer. We do believe it's several things, but we're pushing pretty hard to make sure that, that vaccine access and having the local pod is not one of them.
Well, keep up the, the work in terms of trying to get more people vaccinated. I had one more question. That is on the rent abatement program. I think the last time you reported to us, you talked about payments and process, and it said the same thing. Can you give us a little more definitive information about that?
Well, I know off the top of my head that I've been signing several every day about that, and I don't know whether Adam Vanderwater, our Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, has a little bit better or up to date. I didn't, I don't have something in my notes here. Adam, anything on your front?
Yes, Councilmember Adam Vanderwater, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development. Approximately half of those forty-three applications have been or are in process. There were some initial delays, making sure that applicants had the signed agreement of both the landlord and the tenant, had completed W-two's, had up-to-date business license registrations, and met all the various eligibility criteria. But as your city manager mentioned, I know at least seventeen of those forty-three have been submitted for payment. And I think we're approaching about half of that number at this point.
Anything we can do to help them with the paperwork? It sounds like that probably could be a challenge for some people. Anything we could do to help with the paperwork to expedite that, I think, would be appreciated.
Yeah, I want to take a second to commend Teresa De La Vega in our office, who's been working directly with the applicants to make sure that all the information is submitted. And Tocia Biosterox has been helping her submit the warrant to accounts payable for final payment. So unfortunately, it's not as simple as eligible business and then payment. There are a number of interim steps, and they've been doing a tremendous job getting between here and there.
All right, thanks. On the e-gift program, do you, Mark, do you anticipate that the full budget there will be spent in the next month then?
I would guess that we're going to get pretty close on that. I mean, of course, I think the, the perfect timing on that would be to have the funds run out pretty much at the same time when most of the restrictions have been taken off our local businesses. And I, and I do really sense, I don't know whether you've been in downtown lately, but boy, the amount of activity, even on regular old weeknights, is dramatically different even, you know, than it was a month ago down there. So I'm expecting in another month, the activity will continue, rates will continue to rise, and that I think we will expend those funds in the next thirty days or so.
Yeah, I just don't want money to go unspent for, in one program where, when it could be used effectively in another, just...
And, and you have, thinking about that, you collectively as a council has given me authority as your Director of Emergency Services to move those dollars around to the place of most need. So if we do sense that there's a place where we need a little more, you've given me that authority, and we're not going to leave anything unspent. You, you've got a, you've got a variety of things on your list here as far as spending dollars for not only our local businesses, but our, our population that's most in need. You considered some of those items tonight, so we've got, we've got quite a list here.
Good, thank you.
Okay. See, Councilmember Banano?
Oh yeah, thanks for that report, Mark. Really, really good. Lots of great progress. I have a couple of questions. First, on vaccinations, I think the flyer is a great idea. And maybe consider doing a second round of that if you find that there's still people that, you know, like that. If we're still getting people that we believe might be responding to that technique, I think it's great. Also, going right to people's residences, but also giving these flyers out to some of our businesses, restaurants. Maybe they would post it as well. Some of their workers may, may see it there as well. The Maynison pod, I know that was short notice and wasn't really, really wasn't an effort that we had a lot to do with. Is that something that might be done again? And if we can get more notice out, I had discovered that myself and forwarded it on to some business owners who might have folks in those neighborhoods who work for them, and I know a few people turned out, but with a little more notice, that could be even, even a bigger number. So I wondered if that might be repeated?
Maybe. And so the, the, the mobile points of distribution are pulled in all sorts of direction. We were actually hoping to have a few more later this week, but those got reassigned since those directions come from a combination of state and county direction that the federal government responds to. But yes, I, I would bet that we would have at least one more, and of course, we said exactly what you just said on that. So from that perspective, you know, a few days' notice is a huge difference. And in fact, we did actually bring drop flyers off at some of the local businesses and restaurants as we scrambled to, to let people know about that. But you're correct. That's the first piece. The second piece, of course, is we do expect over the next thirty days or so, as vaccines become more plentiful, that that might not be the most efficient way to actually distribute the vaccines any longer. If you don't need to get an appointment to go into a Safeway or a Walgreens, and you can do it at, you know, eight at night, or, you know, eight in the morning, you know, any, any day of the week, that might ultimately be the way to, especially for some of our service workers who have some constraints on sort of their working hours, might be the most efficient way to deliver that. But yes, if we do get some notice, we will absolutely make sure that that neighborhood and our local employers, you know, have some notice of that.
Yeah, I, from what I can tell, you guys are doing, you know, working with your partners, doing a really good job kind of optimizing this whole thing. So I, I trust that you guys are doing a good job on just trying to get, get all the various modes of communication going, as well as, you know, making sure these pods- modes of communication going as well as, you know, making sure these pods are set up in the right places to get the most benefit. So a couple of questions about um the businesses in downtown survey and the flex zones. So the survey results. Do we know? I'm sure you know, but can you say were were they distributed on First Street businesses primarily, Second Street, Third Street? You know, what what was the distribution of the responses we got?
Wow, that's an impressively detailed question for me. So now I'm going to now do what you just did to me. I'm going to do to uh Adam um and ask him to uh see if if we've got uh any sense of of where our responses came from.
Well, thank you for the question, Councilmember Adam Vanderwater. You're Director of Innovation Economic Development. We did send it out through Livermore Develop uh Downtown Inc. And to a couple of additional businesses. Uh we knew we're not partner members. Um they did ban a geography beyond first. Uh you saw there were seventy-one respondents, two-thirds of which were restaurants. That included First, Second, and Third Streets and the uh particular streets J K and L between them and that surrounding area. Um so we did get respondents as uh far as Railroad Avenue, as far as Third Street, um as far uh as L Street and uh out to uh Maple and to Point East.
Okay, I guess my my point is that um correlating the location with some of the answers might be interesting in terms of who cares the most about flex zone spots. Maybe tease out a little second, second order um information out of that survey. So we maybe we could follow up on that. Um I have a question about the flagpole area. So how will that be part of the next set of outreach meetings, roundtable that um I got a lot of feedback from that one that was held several weeks ago? That Mr. Spence chaired, that that was helpful. I'm wondering um in addition to just the flex zone uh discussion, how about the flagpole area? We we is that going to be part of?
I can take that on behalf of the city manager. The um the poll was structured around all use of flex zones, whether they were on private parking lots, public um parking areas along the right of way or public plazas or parks. Um and we did collect information on where those were cited. Uh the ten respondents that included flex zones based pre-pandemic were all along First Street and totaled twenty-four uh parking spaces in the public right of way. That expanded geographically to include J K um and Second and to total fifty-nine spaces plus those plazas and parks. Uh what we heard in the survey and anecdotally from individual business conversations is that as that activity is picked up downtown, our retailers professional services, personal care services, and entertainment providers are looking for more parking supply. Um so we'll be working with community development um and our downtown association to identify those spaces um that compete for public parking that are underutilized and try to return those to parking first. Um but we're also looking at those plazas and parks and Public Works has been doing some initial cost estimating of what it would take to convert some of those spaces to multipurpose use, so they can be used both for public gatherings uh but also for potential um uh flex zone use uh seasonally as well.
So the parks and plaza, you're including the area I specifically men- mentioned, the flagpole area.
Correct. So there is a number of restaurants that have been using that for restaurant space that does not compete for parking. Um that is heavily used for some of our parades and public gatherings, um but could continue as a flex zone space under the uh the right eligibility requirement.
Okay, and that will be taken up as the continuation of the outreach process, working with business owners as well as all the others that we have to consider in making a decision like that. Trying to understand the process of making decision on.
Correct. So as as I envision it, as and as Mark, I believe outlined to you, your city manager, the first step would be to bring the tents down in compliance with the state fire code requirements. The second step would be to work with those businesses that feel they no longer need those spaces or have more spaces than they need or underutilizing those spaces. Um and then to conduct a a broader uh public conversation about um the remainder of the flex zone spaces and how we um stabilize them in a post-COVID nineteen world and bring them back to seasonality so that they can be enjoyed during the good weather months.
Okay.
Your your point, and your point is directly on point, Councilmember Banano, is obviously there's competition even for the spaces that are green and grassy down there. Some people would like to be able to see those as open spaces. Others would like to use them for uh for business use. And and again, a series of conversations that's going to try and get as a broad input of the stakeholders as we move through first, this first year, which is really a series of pilots, one after another, and then figure out what are we going to do longer term. Um and I think there's some neat opportunities there.
Okay, and last question. Um when we go back to what are we anticipating on June fifteenth, if we know, which is we're out of the tiered system. Um if we're allowed to, if business owners are allowed to have hundred percent occupancy, will there be any social distancing requirements associated with that, which might preclude a hundred percent? If you just don't have a physical space, or do we know anything about that?
And that, and that's a great question, because the governor was very clear and he said common sense requirements would still be in place. Um and very specifically noted masking. Um they did not uh specifically talk about social distancing and or what that distance would be in this environment. So you're correct that you could, you could have a situation where technically you have a hundred percent occupancy, but if you have six foot distancing between different groups, you've cut yourself back to about half again. So we're certainly going to be um watching that, and that's going to be part of our overall response as we work with businesses down there.
Okay, that was it. Thanks again so much. Really, really helpful to see all this data and be able to ask some questions and get a little better uh informed about everything that's going on. Thanks.
Imagine what our meetings will be like once we're on the other side of this. So Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, uh a- again, I'm going to uh a- a- as I do every week or every every meeting, tell you how much the slides help. I really appreciate them. Thanks to the staff for putting them together for you. Um I had two questions. Um one has to do with uh the people who are unwilling to be vaccinated. Is there anything that we can do, are doing to um move hearts and minds and arms to um in that direction?
At this point, that has not been the primary function of your city staff. Um I know county staff ultimately is uh quite uh interested in that and looking forward um in dealing with some of the messaging. One of the things that they found most uh helpful in certain communities um is to actually work with members within that community, especially those that have had negative uh impacts with our healthcare system over time or distrustful of that particular system in general. And so that issue is being raised, um because there's a whole variety of reasons that people uh don't feel comfortable, don't want to get a vaccine. There's no sort of one size fits all. And so I I do know that's a priority for the county. Um your city staff has sort of not started that process of outreach uh since our our primary focus has been on those who actually do want to get a vaccine and making sure they get it as quickly and efficiently as possible.
Okay, and then I had a a question that I believe I've raised in the past, and it just continues to um I I continue to want to worry it. Um and that is um the am- amount of money that we're spending to support businesses and to support, you know, to to, you know, w- we're putting out two million dollars in support in a number of different ways. It's been tremendously effective. And I believe um one question I continue to wonder about is, is there any way to think about how uh that money repays the community? Uh repays the businesses, saves us from businesses going under, um enables us to recover more quickly and so on. Um so that's one, one piece. And then the second piece is recognizing that um two million dollars is not an insignificant amount of money and that we've had that supplemented by state uh or county rather. Are there ways we could think about similar um uh boosting programs going forward? And that that might be a que- that second uh point might be a question going forward. I'll put myself on mute while you answer so that my phone doesn't uh disturb everyone.
So you are correct that your staff has uh uh leveraged other funding sources from outside the city to try and uh extend our reach to make sure that um the businesses and uh community members that we've helped um that we maximize that impact over time. Um to answer your your middle set of questions, um you you know, what normally happens is people do use economic models to try and determine um essentially the avoided costs um that happens. And we don't have that, you know, special uh that special set of skills a- at the local level, but I would be very interested because I think our uh our experience would be similar to other localities, putting those dollars into preserving businesses. I mean intuitively, that makes an enormous amount of sense. You lose a lot of dollars when a business that was otherwise perfectly healthy goes out of goes out of business uh just for the fact that they didn't have a couple of months where the revenue is. On the other hand, of course, we've seen that rela- you know, that most of our total business failures has been for businesses that were relatively weak before COVID. Um and then the the last piece of that puzzle has been is that has provided an opportunity and we've actually had no more businesses start during the pandemic than have gone out of business. So that's a very strong m- method there. Um so at this point, um we are looking especially to the feds in the state that have relatively large-scale programs that are coming uh forward at this point. Um and that's where we really see the bulk of the dollars coming from this point out. Um because both the state and the federal government uh are investing significant amounts in the recovery. And I think local government just did exactly what it should have done. It gave very critical dollars at a very critical time. I think for some of these larger scale efforts, the effort does need to come from the state and federal government. And the great news is both of those have stepped up. And in fact, your staff actually is working to make sure that our restaurants, bars, wineries are um aware of the American Rescue Act uh that allocated, you know, twenty-eight billion dollars for restaurant revitalization. It's been one of the hardest hit sectors. And so we're coordinating to make sure that people know about those uh programs, putting information on our website, um helping people understand uh what is there and actually coordinating with the Small Business Administration to make sure that information goes out um to our local businesses. So your staff continues to work across a number of different areas. Um and if I do bump into uh modeling or information that sort of gives us a more precise understanding of what the true economic impact of that was rather than uh just uh our estimates, um we'll certainly take a look at that.
Okay, uh Councilmember Kick.
Thank you. Uh I just wanted to clarify sixteen seventeen-year-olds. Um I am not one of those anymore. Um do you have to have parents bring you or sixteen and seventeen-year-olds allowed to just come to our distribution site on their own? I know healthcare um around reproductive health, um you know, now you can go to the doctor on your own. What is ru- um healthcare around vaccine health look like? Um is there autonomy for teenagers wanting to get vaccinated, or do they need to have a parent with them?
At this point, they need to have a parent with them. The issue that you brought up, which is uh autonomy to make some of these decisions, um that hasn't uh happened yet. There is some discussion uh at the federal level a- around that issue. But at the current time, um the rules are you do need to ultimately have a parent with you.
So there's no like, I I'm just wondering how that's going to limit people getting there, like if parents are at work or doing other things, um there's no um permission slip or any system. Right now, parent must be physically with you.
At the moment, that's the requirement we expect. And I think this one actually will will benefit the most from the transition of being normalized back into when you can go down to Safeway. Um you know, and with a lot of flexibility in the hours, you don't require an appointment in those sorts of items. So we do uh note that, yes, currently that does create a barrier. Um but we think over the next few weeks at least, uh as supplies uh adjust, there may be, you know, a number of ways to address that, including if the law or guidance has changed.
Okay, uh I would be useful, I think, if we can make that really clear. Um because I the last thing I would want is teenagers to be like, yeah, I can go get this. And then they show up and mom's not with them and then they're turned away. That's a wasted shot. Um so if we can make that clear on on our website, I would appreciate that as of right now, sixteen seventeen must have a parent present. Um that would be helpful.
Very good.
Are you uh done? Okay, I had a couple of questions. First of all, what's the status on us trying to get the local pod? What what's your feeling is to, if we're going to get it, and if so, how soon?
So what the county has moved to rather than um allocating sort of a permanent point of distribution to us is to have uh essentially the Cal O E S and FEMA pod units. They've now made a half a dozen visits to uh the city and and I believe, you know, from this point out, that's likely to be the mechanism that they use to to help us deliver shots. In addition, of course, we've had another half a dozen uh times when we've partnered with private en- entities, Walgreens and Safeway um to have the the points of distribution. And of course, this is in addition to sort of our normal healthcare uh providers providing that and what's happening at the at the fairgrounds. But at this point, um based on where the county is and their county resources, we don't expect to have a permanent county pod. And it probably honestly is, you know, we're probably within three weeks or a month of switching over to sort of more traditional healthcare providers doing that almost exclusively.
Okay, because it seems that the uh pods we've had, we haven't necessarily had sufficient notice to get some of the harder-reach people there. It seems some of the, it's been kind of last minute possibly. So but you think that we're not going to have the focus there anyway, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I think in the next few weeks, that will change. And and that is correct. That y- your main point there is the same one we made back to the county is just a few more days notice makes a huge difference. Every uh local point of distribution has given out every single shot with the exception of when they gave us a thousand shots in a single day. So from that perspective, uh every time we've had five hundred available, which is the normal amount, that some that folks try and get done in a day. We've we've had every one of those uh ultimately uh taken the appointments and walk-ins.
Yeah, what I'm concerned about is the the harder-to-reach uh members of our community and maybe the more reluctant members of our community. And um you know, add, you know, last minute or something and uh too complicated a process is not helping us. So I am hopeful that uh as we switch over more to trying to get the the final segments vaccinated, that perhaps that decision could be reconsidered.
Well, we're certainly at raise that issue with the county, absolutely.
Okay, I would request that. Uh the other thing, uh switching over to um the earlier comment about the uh the or discussion about the uh survey as to what to do with the flex zones, et cetera. Just wanted to voice my own uh opinion that uh it's best if the businesses around each local spot could get together and help figure it out. And then in an attempt to have a global solution that kind of fits everywhere isn't feasible, but that we're going to have to look at this in a more granular level per type of spot. Is that your sense as well?
It is, and that's why we're literally going to have conversations with every single uh person that has uh flex zone spaces as well as every single area that surrounds that. So um you're you're exactly right. Um one uh what what works in one uh part of one block may not be what works in another part of another block.
Okay, I just want to, and and to the extent everybody understands that we're going to try and do our best to to really figure this out in a, you know, site-specific area. And then also the comment about the, you know, a spot such as the flagpole where it may have traditionally uh people utilized it because it had grass. And I think we should also fold into the equation here the fact that we now have Stockman's Park. And we've seen with, since the flagpole area was occupied by uh dining, that people have uh recently switched to that. So I would put that into the mix is, don't say we have to go back because in the past, we didn't have Stockman's Park and now we have it. So that strikes me as a a way to allow people to have their place to congregate for political purposes. And we still can have the uh the expanded dining for those restaurants in that area. So I, you know, we can have a like, you know, everybody can come out ahead. So the uh a last question uh is with respect to, there may be some action items. Would you prefer that to be uh held for matters initiated or those that are pertinent to this? Should we do them now?
Uh either way works.
So I, okay, then I I prefer to uh see if there are any uh suggested action items with respect to this uh that anybody might have. Councilmember, let's see, who was up there first? Uh Councilmember Kick.
Uh if if this needs to be a matters right, uh action item right now, just making sure that we're very clear about what sixteen seventeen-year-olds need when they come. They need a parent. So if we can get head nods on that, I guess. They need a parent. So if we can get head nods on that, I guess.
Right. So that's why you'd already mentioned that. So I thought it might be appropriate to just clarify that now rather than come back later. And Councilmember Banano.
Well, yeah, I didn't really form it in the in the form of an action item, but I would like to just encourage as soon as the data has been distilled to and and compiled on the survey to get that back out to businesses. So everybody can sort of get a feeling for what the community in that area prefers and let people know what the process going forward is gonna be. Our business owners are anxious to know what the process is. They're, you know, they're anxious for the answer as well, but but I think they'd be satisfied right now to know what the city's go forward planning process is going to be, how soon we can sort of get the survey data out and then plan a meeting where people can, you know, continue the conversation. So I guess that would be that would be my request tonight.
Well, like Councilmember Banano, do you have anything with regard to consideration of an incentive program for people to get vaccinated?
Well, I could bring that up, yes. I I had considered that. I was I was wondering whether there would be an opportunity for some of our service workers to, through some type of perhaps a city incentivized program, maybe a cost shared program where workers could get paid time off to go get vaccinated. It may just just be the, you know, the impetus that they need to go get vaccinated in some cases. So the idea would be rather than having to take time off from work or take time out of their personal time, they could at least get paid to go get a vaccine, assuming that we have a really nice, healthy supply of vaccine in in our mix right now, then it's just a matter of getting the population to take advantage of them. And I think if there's reluctance or just feeling like I've got to take time off and lose money or take time off that, you know, I'd rather not do unless I get paid for it. So I guess that that's a suggestion that that I'd like to at least put on the table.
So if I could maybe just generalize it, what you're suggesting to staff is that they consider some type of incentive program? And that was one example.
Correct. Yes, that would be one.
So, okay, you want head nods? I'll nod on that. Okay. So I I are there, I I think that's, I just wanted to get that out where we're there. Now we need to before we move on from this, need to see if there's any public comment. Do we have any public that wish to comment on this?
Yes, sir, Honorable Mayor. The one speaker we have right now is Scott Low. Scott, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think, but don't forget that there's a two bearing, two mutation of COVID nineteen. One is a South African, the bearing, the other one is the Brazil bearing. Neither basin works on those on this tool. And also, South Africa, African, the bearing was found a couple cases in Alameda County two months ago. And a couple of them found in Santa Clara County. And the other things that our border to South South America still open. The other things that younger children still not be able to vacillate it until two thousand twenty two. So so we should be very caution about face masking and also social distancing if it's possible. Did you, did you understand what I'm saying? Yeah, there's a, there's a mutation from South Africa and the other mutation from Brazil. And I think even Pata and Madonna, the basin, it doesn't totally, doesn't work on that way. Doesn't work on this this two, two COVID nineteen mutation. So it means that the people, people get vaccinated if they, if if they get a some, some people have this two bearing, still can pass to that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think, are there any other members of the public that wish to comment?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, we'll close the public comment on item six dot one. We've had the staff report. Thank you. This is one of the more robust discussions on this. We've had it a while. So again, thanks for all you do on that. Think we're ready now to move on to item six dot two, update on the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to introduce Deputy City Manager Christine Martin, who's going to lead us through the update.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. As your city manager just stated, I'm Christine Martin, your Deputy City Manager and the liaison to the Council Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. Last summer, following the tragic murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis, the city council formed the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee, which consisted of then Vice Mayor Warner and Councilmember Monroe, and authorized the formation of a community member working group to provide information to help the Subcommittee. From September to December of last year, with the help of consulting firm, the Public Dialogue Consortium, the Subcommittee and Working Group met several times to further the Subcommittee's objective and framework. As a reminder, the Subcommittee's objective is to develop recommendations to the city council to foster equity and inclusion in Livermore through diverse community engagement that will result in a welcoming city exemplified by equity of opportunity and just treatment for all. The working group members self-selected into one or more of four subgroups. Those subgroups met three times each in Phase One. They worked collaboratively to develop a mission and brainstorm ideas for a project that would help them accomplish each subgroup's goals to gather information for the Subcommittee's consideration. In December, the first phase culminated with an interactive workshop for all working members. The workshop provided tools and techniques using connection and sharing of stories to have difficult conversations and dialogue with others. The Subcommittee is currently in the final phase, which began in February. In January, Mayor Warner appointed Councilmember Carling to take his place on the Subcommittee. And a second application period was opened for new working group members. On February sixteenth and the twenty third, orientations and a kickoff meeting for new members and returning members of the working group to begin Phase Two were held. This phase consists of four interactive storytelling sessions, similar to the one held in December, where the working group will learn ways to dialogue with neighbors, friends and community members to understand how unique life experiences can inform and influence perceptions in a diverse cultural community. In addition, each of the four subgroups will continue to meet five times to refine and continue their missions and projects that they established in Phase One. And at this time, I'd like to share a few slides with the council to present a more detailed look at the subgroup's work since February. And so on the first slide, you can see that this slide is on subgroup A, which is community culture and representations. Their mission is to is to look at how the visual and physical context shape how we treat each other. They have selected two projects or they have formulated two projects. One is to provide information to the Subcommittee on Ways to Broaden Community Participation in City Government. And the second is to provide information to the Subcommittee on Ways to Make the City's Communications Welcoming, Inclusive and Representative of the Whole Community. And I wanted to just highlight some of the meetings that they've had so far and and as you can see also upcoming. And that included presentations to this, to the working group members on various subjects. So on March twenty third, our city clerk, Marie Weber, presented to the group all about the city's advisory bodies. She told them how the recruitment process works for each advisory body and also some information on the membership makeup and and role of each of the advisory bodies for the city. On April sixth, Management Analyst Stephanie Agidio in the City Manager's Office provided a presentation on the city's communication strategy and processes. And also that evening, the Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, Adam Vanderwater, along with the consultant team, presented on the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three Livermore Cultural Arts Vision Project. And then on April twenty seventh, tomorrow evening, this group will receive presentations from the Livermore Chamber of Commerce on the Leadership Livermore Program and a presentation from our Human Resources Manager, Nancy Diaz, on the city's human resource practices. Next slide, please. The second group is subgroup B, Policing and Human Services. And their mission that they developed was to reimagine and better coordinate public safety and human services for better outcomes. And they had a project that took place and concluded in the first phase of the Subcommittee's work, which was to review the police department's use of force policies. And I'll explain a little bit more about that right now. So it takes us off topic just a tiny bit. But I wanted to let you know, this work did conclude in the first phase and it consisted of a subset of this subgroup. And they met several times with staff from the City Attorney's Office and the Police Department to review the department's use of force policy as it relates to the eight can't wait recommendations. This group facilitated by the Public Dialogue Consortium had productive and collaborative dialogue around existing city policy, legal requirements and best practices. The collaboration led to conscientious adjustments in several areas. Those adjustments were only made where all were in agreement, that there would be no increased liability to the city, no negative impact to the public or officer safety, and also inability to actually implement. The updated policy is attached to your report this evening and also can be found on the police department's webpage. I also just wanted to note that prior to this group's work, the city had made adjustments to the policy to align with recent required state policy changes in this area, which were also happening right around the same time that this group was meeting. So that concludes my my report on the use of force policies. Moving into the projects that this group will work on in this phase is a review of police department stop data. And I I look at providing information to the Subcommittee on Ways to Integrate Mental Health Clinicians with the Police Department to assist officers in the field with mental health crisis calls for service. And this group has had a couple of presentations worth noting as well. On March twenty fifth, Consultant Rob Tiller presented to the group about data collection and benchmarking best practices and introduced the project to review the police department stop data. On April eighth, Captain Boberg presented the mental health services that are provided in the policing context. And on April twenty ninth, later this week, Housing and Human Services Staff Claudia Young and Josh Thurman will present on how the city coordinates and collaborates with the police department, county and all our local service providers to provide mental health services. Next slide. Subgroup C is the Reaching and Inspiring Younger Generations Group. Their mission is to provide resources and engagement opportunities for youth in intergenerational contexts. Their project is to engage youth to hear and learn about their experiences out in the Livermore community to provide information to the Subcommittee on Ways to Better Engage Youth and Ensure They Feel Welcome, Included and Represented. And their group is working on putting together a youth panel discussion that will take place at their May fourth meeting. And last slide is subgroup D. And that's our Housing Workplace Economic and Transportation Environments Group. Their mission is to understand policies and practices that shape housing, transportation, workplace and economic environments. Their project is to prepare a workshop series on various affordable housing related topics to gain a baseline understanding about the complexities and opportunities for affordable housing in Livermore. And they have also received several presentations. On April first, the Planning Manager, Steve Stewart, presented on various topics related to housing and land use regulations. On April fifteenth, Assistant Community Development Director Eric Urenga presented on affordable housing complexities and regulatory challenges. Also on the fifteenth, Echo Housing Executive Director Margie Rocha and the Echo's Fair Housing Coordinator Angie Watson-Hajim presented on fair housing practices. And also on April fifteenth, it was a very busy meeting, the Livermore Housing Authority Executive Director Dejean Paul Scott Miller presented on the federal voucher and housing programs. And in the coming weeks, on May sixth, Eric Urenga and Eric Echo Housing will also come back and present additional information as the group had a lot of questions and and welcome the opportunity to hear these folks present again on related topics. And so with that, I just wanted to conclude with the Subcommittee will sunset on June twenty first and therefore the council will receive a report on the Subcommittee's work at their June twenty first meeting. Some of the areas that the Subcommittee may bring to the council's attention include ways to leverage this group, this working group, in future city endeavors, such as on the general plan update, the climate action plan update, asset management, future advisory body recruitments, key to the city and Citizens Police Academy. The Subcommittee may also bring ideas around sharing the staff presentations with the broader community in various media forms and involving the library in various educational areas around equity and inclusion topics. And this concludes staff's presentation and update on the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. And staff is available for any questions you may have. And I also believe that your Subcommittee members would like to also provide additional information at this time. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Impressive amount of work. I see Councilmember Kick has her hand up at this point.
Can you read the mission of subgroup A for me one more time, Christine?
Yes. Let me flip to that piece of. How visual and physical context shape how we treat each other.
You're on mute?
I was saying, I see this now. Thank you.
Okay, let's see, do the sub. Councilmember Kick, you still have your hand up? Is there more you want to say? No, okay. Vice Mayor Monroe, Subcommittee Member.
So first of all, I'd like to thank Christine for an excellent presentation. My intention was to add to it. There's not a whole lot more I can say other than as as I'm, well, that, you know, I can always say more. But what I'm interested in at this point is some of the, some of the questions that Christine raised at the at the end. As we go forward, is there direction that the council would like to give the Subcommittee at this point to guide the working group in in going forward in any of the areas discussed? So, for example, wait a minute, wrong, wrong piece of information up. There we go. In subgroup A, we had superb presentations by our city clerk, Marie Weber, by Management Analyst Stephanie Agidio. And I, you know, all, all of those, Adam Vanderwater, the consultant for for the Arts Vision. By the way, the working group was the Arts Vision's first reach out. Yay, us. And, you know, is there more you would like to know about those projects? My goal would be to hopefully to share those with with the city because they are extremely useful. But I'm curious to know what you have to say. I had a couple of words about the policing and human services. I just wanted to really, I mean, Christine said that it had been a really hard, very, the group, subgroup worked together with the police department and with human services extremely well. I I think this really speaks to what happens when the goal is working towards the betterment of the community. I also wanted to speak really to Consultant Rob Tiller's, again, superb presentation. I would love to be able to share it with more of the community. And then finally, I'm gonna skip over the youth program because that's a little bit different than some of the presentations. But subgroup D. But subgroup D, as you see, it's Housing Workplace Economic and Transportation Environments. However, because that's all basically everything about how we live, it shows to focus on this area of affordable housing. And again, what we are finding in observing the working group, at least I'm finding, but I think the working group is finding is that this is enormously complicated. Because this is one of the areas that deeply affects the city, how do we share this? Those should be, you know, so if you hear a theme here, it's how do we share? So any thoughts on that at this point before we sun, you know, as, as we're in the mid-process, I would love to hear them.
Okay. Need to weigh in at this point?
If you'd like, certainly.
First of all, I want to thank Christine not only for the report this evening, but she's put in yeoman's effort into helping and being there at most, if not all of the, the meetings that Vice Mayor and I attend. So she's really done a fabulous job in terms of helping coordinate the speakers and, and helping us get through the meetings as well. I just want to point out a couple, make a couple of observations. One is, as you know, I joined this in January and I wasn't sure what to expect, but I would say that the folks that have been attending have been serious and focused on trying to improve the, the city in a variety of different ways and making it more welcoming and more inclusive. And so I've been very impressed with the dedication of the folks that have attended the meetings and many of, some of these people come to all four of the subgroups, so they really are putting in the, the time. I wanted to follow up a little bit more on subgroup B, the policing one, and just point out that Rob Tilier is on the faculty at the University of Texas, San Antonio. And he's made a career out of looking at, at the data, stop data that we talked about. And it's going to take him a little while to go through the data and actually he won't be able to present the material until after the sunset of the, of the work, of the subgroup. So the plan is to get that group back together in the fall, probably to review the data that Rob will have collected by that time and, and analyze. I also want to point out that we had a pretty robust discussion on April 8th about mental health. And Lieutenant Jason Boberg spent a fair amount of time with us. And many people have thought of the Kahoots program up at Eugene as, as a way to go, but I think the discussion with this particular group here thinks that having a mental health person, expert, trained person in mental health, riding with a police officer for these kinds of calls is a more effective way than the Kahoots program. But the Kahoots program only sends out mental health people. Now, that may work part of the time, but I think one of our concerns is, and certainly the concern of the police department here is that it may help to have a police officer in the background as the mental health officer or person. Not necessarily, not an officer, mental health expert tries to intervene with the person that's having, having a crisis. So this is a very rich and deep conversation and certainly the people, the residents that are in that particular subgroup agreed with the approach that the Lieutenant Boberg presented. I just, so I think that was all I wanted to say at this point. Certainly, any comments, suggestions from the balance of the council would be welcomed as Vice Mayor mentioned. So I'll stop there and hope we'll get some discussion unless you think we're doing everything just right, in which case we can move on. Thanks.
Yeah, good work. Councilmember Kick.
So in regards to the Kahoots versus other programs, so AB 988 is a bill moving in the state legislature that was written by Rebecca Bauer-Kahan, our local representative. It would affect this very directly. So before, I think, I think we're going to have to see what the state says about what we do about mental health beforehand, but I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to talk to our legislative team on staff to see if we, as a city, are going to take a position on this bill that would basically be a mental health hotline. So instead of calling 911, you call 988 and it's, it's a bill that is funded, it's paid for with, within the bill. It's not going to cost our, our city money in, in a way that I understand. So maybe talking about that at some point would be valuable because it is going to the state legislature. I'm also wondering about this presentation about our stop data, how we as an entire council can get that information? If, if that is something that we could. I know that we all can't be at the subcommittee meeting if they, if you all get back together. But if there's a way for staff to present that at a subsequent council meeting, that would be interesting to, to me as well. And then for the, how do we get this information out? It would be great if maybe we could talk about some of the information that you think is really valuable that have been shared during this, if Councilmember Monroe or Vice Mayor Monroe and I could work with Stephanie and Christine as the comms committee to figure out how do we get this out in a broader context? I guess my question just would be to Jason, once it sunsets, will, is it okay for me to have all of this, you know, information? I think so, because it's public record, all the, all the meeting minutes, but if the conversation moved to not in the working group, but how do we present what the working group did through the comms committee? That was a lot, so stop now.
Okay, Councilmember Bonanno.
Yeah, so I just want to also say thank you to Christine and all the members of the various subgroups as well as my fellow council members who've led this effort. So I, I'm, this is, I'm trying to get my head around everything these various groups are doing and it's, it's a lot. And this is the first time I've really, really heard a fairly thorough briefing, or at least sort of seen what each group is doing fairly specifically. So I, I would like to perhaps attend a couple of the subgroup meetings and, and I don't have a lot of, you know, really cogent helpful things to say at this point, but I, I do feel like a tremendous amount of work has been done. What I didn't hear from Ms. Martin was, was of all the things that might happen as the group's sunset, was there any suggestion that these various projects, which sound, some of which sound fairly ambitious, are they all going to be done? And then June 21st comes and the, the work of these committees is done, or is there any opportunity for taps? Maybe not all of them, but some of them should continue. I mean, we've done that with camp and other committees. I, I, I don't know if that's been discussed or considered, but certainly would be something if the work's not done, we should, we should give ourselves the opportunity to continue it, so. And then just one point to Councilmember Kick's comment about AB 98. That sounds great. I mean, I certainly would support hearing more about it and endorsing it or being part of endorsing it if we did so as a council. It sounds somewhat similar to the Access Tri-City Program, right, where there'd be, actually be a specific kind of mental health urgent, urgent care program set up. So it sounds aligned. I, I think it must be that this is becoming what's, you know, considered a useful way to help people in these crisis situations. So it sounds very similar to what Access is doing. So maybe we jump onto something that comes out of the state or figure out a way to leverage what they're doing to even do more of it, because what we were, what we approved for Access was somewhat limited. And they had a lot of ambitious goals, which I think, again, we, we need a lot of this and maybe, maybe there's a way to, to compound what we're doing more locally. So I will leave it there and thank everyone for all the great work and, and really anxious to get a little better up to speed on all of the various subgroups, but thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Right, so I wanted to address some of the comments and then maybe either Christine or Councilmember Carling could continue that. With regard to communications, I think the general question isn't whether, isn't that we put material up or, you know, that the communications committee would put it up, but what do we want to put up? So it's content and it's methodology and it's, it's sort of thinking through the process. And my expectation is that as we come in, in June, we'll have a more form, form, a more well-formulated proposal, but this is sort of the, the mid-course, so what do y'all think? Should be in there, should not be in there, you know, set of videos, you know, is there any, any general thoughts that would help guide us through this next, you know, as we're coming towards the, the final process? So that's one point. With, I, I have, was part of, I'm, I'm on a separate legislative committee on the League of California Cities. As part of that, I was part of a roundtable that discussed some of the, the upcoming bills, including the, I think it's 998. And the, so I thought about it specifically with regard to this, you know, to what we're doing. And with, with regard to the access program, I don't think it's precisely the same as what, okay. So first of all, what Access is doing is not the same as what we're considering in Livermore. It's, it's a very, it's a, it's, it's, it's you know, basically urgent care for mental health is, is the pilot program. What, what we're talking about with regard to what the, the police would be doing with the mental health would be more intervention along the way. I do think that access and 998 might have an intersection, but it's not clear to me yet. And that's not, that's not what we're talking about here, so never mind that. So let's see, and then the third point. Oh, the sunsetting piece. Yes, I, I think that's incredibly important. Some of these pieces that we're looking at, some of these programs will conclude, they do have, you know, as did the looking at the, the use of force policies. And we also know that the data analysis is going to continue. That's already decided. So that is something that I, again, I would hope that, you know, all of my colleagues would, would think about going forward. The other piece that we haven't talked about in detail is the storytelling. And one of the goals there is taking this group of people and working to build bridges across very different areas that in, 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 you know, different opinions. And these might be political and they might be with regard to, you know, for example, policing. But I will share that I got an email from somebody on with regard to a completely different issue who said, oh, I was with you with the build bridge building. I now get it. Let me address this email to you in the following way. So it changed somebody's thinking. Now, I would love to see us think about that for the city, but maybe that's not what we want to do. But again, it's on the table. So I think the question, Councilmember Bonanno, is, well, I, you know, I, I take it to heart. That's for us to decide later on, so that's part of the reason we're bringing this to you now, is so that you have a little bit more time to think about it.
Okay. Councilmember Kick.
So to, to be clear, as we merit, let us marinate this information, passing our ideas on to the subcommittee members, would that be a, a good next steps for the rest of us that are not on there to say, here are some things I would like to see we ta, us talk about in June? Since, you know, we're not going to sit here and talk about equity inclusion all night long. And then would it be possible, you know, is, is it appropriate to do some sort of matters to ask staff to bring back some information about AB 988 to see if we as a city would like to take a position or not?
So Honorable Mayor, we can divide, we can give some information on, on 988. We have a support position on that consistent with your platform. So that item is already addressed in that way. I'd recommend Councilmember Kick that you direct your comments to our staff on this one, just so we don't get into that awkward situation of a Brown Act violation of having three of you somehow out of conversation. And of course, that's the other item where we can't have a council member visit the meetings, because of course then I need to have a fully noticed city council meeting that simply has other people there as a guest. So of course, that, that's one of the reasons that we wanted to have the briefing this evening for you, as well as sort of give you an idea of where we're going on that. And I do want to be clear about one last item there is you heard from our staff about the variety of different ways that these activities, when the committee was concluded and their recommendations were ultimately presented to you and that those recommendations, the ones you felt were most appropriate, first as a subcommittee and then as an entire council, to give direction to staff on, those would ultimately be the, the next steps of this. This committee is not created as a standing committee and nor are the resources currently available. I mean, you're all aware, for example, on camp, we have sort of three full-time people who've been assigned to that to turn that into a standing committee. And at this point, we were not thinking that that was either the most efficient way to get these recommendations adopted and implemented, that once those recommendations were adopted by the council, they would become direction to your staff to ultimately implement that. And we would, you know, utilize the resources necessary at that point and/or make changes to your other committees. There's a whole variety of things, of course, that could come out of those recommendations. So did want to sort of note that is already part of the thinking of how do we move this to the next steps?
Okay, great. So we as a city already have a support position, have, how have we shown that support position to, to the legislature? What does that look like? Can you just clarify that for me?
Deputy City Manager Martin will give you sort of an, an update on sort of how we do that.
Thank you, City Manager. This is Christine Martin. And we have submitted letters of support and that's done through the legislative process. They have a portal system that we are required to upload our letters of support into. It's a new system as of last year. And so, so that is how we take care of our, of our positions. And we also always copy our local legislators on any positions that we take, just so that they are also aware. But actually, as you noted, our local legislator is the author of this piece of legislation. So that doesn't always happen, but is unique in this case. And I will also say that I believe most of the tri-valley cities also did support letters as well on this item, although it is not a, it's not something that is on our tri-city councils legislative platform. So I believe we sent individual letters on, on this from the cities.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's what we, what, what we've done if, if the rest of the council thinks that there's more that we should do.
Topic here.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm saying. So it's, it seems like we've, we've, we've moved past that. And Christine, you would be the person that Bonanno and I would move and, and Warner would, would send suggestions to rather than speaking directly to Monroe and Carling, correct?
So Councilmember Kick, if the council wanted to weigh in on something specific, in particular majority of the council, that would have to return to the council meeting so you could give the direction in that forum as a result of the Brown Act. What's been communicated to you is that that super letter has gone out. However, if the council would like to have input on there and actually dictate what the language should, should be or how it should read, that would be an agenda item for future city council action. Again, this is, where this is a subject more for management to initiate at this point. It was raised in this context, but we can continue the conversation there if you'd like.
Sure, yeah. I was noting that we're kind of moving past, but just to clarify, Christine, you are the person we are to speak to, not to Monroe or Carling.
Well, yes, but as your city attorney just stated, what I do in my capacity with the blessing of the council via the legislative platform.
No, not legislative, just ideas about what comes back.
Excuse me for a second. This is, I think, going way too deep into this. We're talking about our legislative platform. I think it's time to move on. If I may, Mr. Mayor. This may be a good subject for upcoming continuation of the rules of procedure and the norms and values workshop. So I think we can pick this conversation up there. Yeah, we're going a little bit far afield here in my mind. So at this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. And then after public comment, I've got a couple of comments and then presumably we've wrapped this one up.
So is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment. So I, I wanted to start with, as I mentioned earlier, this is an impressive amount of work. And, you know, I don't, you know, one of the things that might be an interesting statistic is the number of people hours that have been put into this. I think it's huge. And I want to commend all of those, the participants, the staff, the subcommittee members. Because this has been multiple meetings per week for several hours. That's a lot of work. And it's very impressive. You can see from all the different subgroups we've had and their project items. But one of the things that I would ask here, I think I got it, but I'm not quite sure. Overall, how would you say it's going? It has been going, especially from the community members that have been participating. What's the, what's the feeling about how this is progressing? City Clerk, do you want to say something or not?
Mayor, I didn't have any comments.
Oh, that's what I thought I heard. That there weren't any comments or was I get that wrong?
That's correct. No comments.
Right. So I thought I opened and closed it, but okay, the public comment period. So, so anyway, who would be best? Okay, I see. I posed a question. I've got Vice Mayor Monroe and Councilmember Carling that wish to speak. And let's start with Vice Mayor Monroe.
I'd say that overall it's going extremely well. The, the subgroups, some of the subgroups are more engaged than others. Some of them have had a more difficult time wrapping their heads around the various issues. In particular, I would say that, and this has nothing to do with the individual people. It has to do with the complexity of some of the issues. But in all cases, people are working towards goals. They are working with each other. They are learning to work across differences, which I think is hugely important, particularly in Livermore. The, what's interesting to me is watching the effect of the storytelling, which seems, it's one of the issues we had with the first phase is two competing goals. One of which is to tell one's story because this is, you know, this is who, who we are and where we live. Along with getting real work done. The idea that staff separated those out into two completely different tracks has been hugely important, I think. And really has made a difference in how people, you know, as I said, I think that one works, what one moves. That the skills learned in the storytelling do translate into the other groups. I also think that they're learning a huge amount. It's, and it's teaching, I think, at least I'll speak for myself, it's teaching me just how much we all take for granted. And I say that as a still fairly new council member, I, I, I recognize that three years ago, I was probably where most of them are. It's an enormous amount of work that we're responsible for. So they're learning that. So I think it's going very well. What I think would be a tremendous shame is if we cannot find a way to keep not the group itself recognizing what a city manager said, recognizing what the amount of hours that this takes, that we, if we recognizing that keeping this group going is not a good option. But finding ways to take those learnings and projects and move them into another venue of, into the public, move them wherever they belong.
Okay. So my, my question was how are they feeling? And so perhaps you might consider some kind of wrap-up survey to explore the people's experiences and impressions and suggestions. So I, just a thought. Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thanks. I, I agree with the Vice Mayor. I I think, I think when I joined, I wasn't, wasn't clear to me how a couple of these groups were going to create a project, as we've called it. But I've been pleasantly surprised and they really are making progress. And how they're feeling, I think that the idea of a survey is not a bad one. I think we should think about that. But I think I think we've been having very good participation. We get ten-ish people. Had you had each of these? And as I said earlier, some of these folks come to all four. And so I think it'd be pretty easy to get Zoom fatigue at this point. But many of them are hanging in there quite a bit. And so I've been quite impressed with, with the level of participation and interest in trying to make a difference. So I think it's been great.
Wonderful. That, that was my impression. And again, I want to thank all of you for hanging in there because I know how much work it is. And if people didn't think they were getting value out of it, they might have dropped out. So it sounds that there's energy here. So where I would want to go next is, you know, we've talked about sunsetting this effort and we all know the reasons that we need to do that because we, if you never do that, you don't come to a conclusion and you don't have, you know, progress in some ways. So what I'm wondering about is, you know, the work will never be done. There's a lot of good foundation here. And are we going to see in June, we've kind of alluded to it here. But how do we proceed? How do we keep people engaged? How do we continue to make progress? Even though we cannot continue in the same mode we are now, but some, I would request some thoughts as to the transition. I think everything else that I saw in the presentation, I think is wonderful and all the projects, but making sure that it is, we're not coming necessarily to an abrupt stop. And people somehow think we're done because I don't think we ever are. I think it sounds like a lot of good progress has been made. And how do we continue in a, in a reasonable way? So what are, what are the thoughts there? I think we've you know, heard some things that we're going to be continuing. But some of the core people from the community that are so engaged, how do we keep them engaged and how do we utilize them to keep the energy going? And within the reasonable confines of how much staff we have available. Then the other thing that I would presume here, and I think we've touched on it. Will there be a list of items coming to us for approval? That says, okay, these are the, some policy changed or whatever. So I would suggest that at, at the end of this is the sunsetting period is an enumeration of all that was accomplished. And then to the extent that we were talking about earlier, that maybe we need items to come to us for approval on something or other. We'd just like to know what it is. And so we can, we can point to that as a, a set of accomplishments and, and a, and an idea of how we build upon them going forward over the years. Because I, I don't think this ever goes away. And we'll be, we'll continue to need to address it, not just because your response to some crisis. So that's, those are my, my thoughts on this. So does that make sense that what I just said? And I would also ask city staff to weigh in on what I just suggested.
Honorable Mayor, this is Christine Martin, your Deputy City Manager. I'll jump in and weigh in. That is, you're, you're hitting the nail on the head with what we intend to bring back in June to the council. As far as will there be a list of items for approval, that remains to be seen at this point, but we would certainly enumerate all that was accomplished when we come back and, and include a plan for leveraging the working groups' energy moving forward. As well as ways in which the city organization will be incorporating key lessons and recommendations learned throughout this process into city processes. And next steps for, for us as an organization moving forward. But certainly there may be recommendations that come forward from the subcommittee for, for the council's consideration and approval. I, I wouldn't rule that out. It's just kind of hard to know at this moment in time what that will look like in June. But I believe that, you know, we have heard that, the, what you've said this evening and what you're looking back, looking forward to getting back in June and, and we will certainly bring it back to you in that way for, for your, your and council's consideration.
So I think, you know, building on what you just said, where I was really getting to is, are there things that the council needed, needs to approve? Or if we look at all that has been accomplished, and it didn't actually require council approval, but it's now a way of thinking. So that staff is empowered to work with the community to get a lot done. So I'm just suggesting that that's, it'd be helpful to see what actions were taken, who approved it. And the sense, I think, in, when it comes to us in June, will be saying to affirming to continue to think that way and act that way.
Got it. Yes, that makes perfect sense, actually. So understood.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
So I'm thinking about this in three ways, I think. One is the, okay, we've, we've done this and it's sort of implicit in our thinking. I'm always a little leery about that because implicit depends on the people and the culture. So you know, we've, we've changed the way we think in, in the following ways. We, we relate to each other differently. I'd still like to see that some of that's written down, whatever that is. And discuss in public, you know, discuss among, at, at a notice meeting. So, and some of that may or may not require, some of that will not require council approval, I'm fairly sure. But still probably should be recorded. A second piece might be changes that do require council approval, and those would be items that would come before you for approval. A third area might well be, okay, we believe that this particular, you know, this is something that either the city, with private entities, nonprofits or for-profits or some combination need to work together on to move forward. We are going to make connections from the working group, say, to these private, to, to form these collaborations. So those are the three categories I'm thinking about currently. And, you know, I, I could probably fit with each of the areas, each of the four areas, I could probably find something that would fit each of those. But not at this point.
I mean, that's the call along the lines of what I was talking about. So you as a subcommittee member can continue to work with Christine. And we think about what this June wrap-up meeting looks like. But it's really a question of celebrating what has occurred and thinking about how to best leverage it in a practical way going forward. And keeping people engaged. So I think that's it. I, I think we could at this point say that you have enough direction and approval with respect to all the items. Is that? Okay. So I think we don't need a motion on this and we're just, we're accepting the, the update. So is that, has our requirement been satisfied at this point? Unless the City Manager?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to close item six dot two. And before we go to six dot three, we generally take a 10-minute break. Two hours into this, we've gone two and a half hours. So let's come back at nine thirty-five for item six point three. Welcome back everyone to this April twenty-sixth meeting of the Livermore City Council. We just returned from a break and we're on to item six dot three. Which is discussion and direction regarding the city council's commitment to a culture of welcome, inclusion and respect. And the comments made by Planning Commissioner Stein at the Planning Commission meeting on April twentieth, twenty-one. As well as the complaints received from the community. And I'm going to reiterate what I said at the beginning of citizens forum, not everything, but the essential piece. Is that this item six point three is to discuss the city's commitment to that culture of welcome, inclusion and respect. And what I believe to be insensitive comments made by Planning Commissioner Stein. This agenda item was added for the purpose of to have a conversation with fellow city council members about our commitment to inclusion. How we, as the council reinforced that culture with members of our advisory bodies. And as well to give members of the community a chance to voice their concerns about Commissioner Stein's comment. To reiterate, this item is not about the Eden Housing Project. And when we get to citizens' comment, any comment with respect to Eden Housing Project itself will be told that it's not appropriate and will be, if necessary, continued to a reopening of citizens' forum at the end of this agenda item. So please, if you intend to comment, stay focused. So the, with that, I'll proceed, then talk about how we're going to handle this item. So I've had the opening remarks about what this is and frankly, what it is not. We'll proceed with the council discussion as to their thoughts on the areas that I said about the nature of the comments and how we reinforce that culture with our planning commission advisory bodies. We'll then turn to see if Commissioner Stein wants to say anything. Open it up for citizens' comments in general. And then we will return after that back to the council. I'll close the public comment on it. And we'll return back to the council for a discussion of next steps, if any. So are we, is everyone clear on the process? You just kind of thumbs up or is that, are you raising your hand to say you're clear or you're raising your hand to ask a question? So I'm not clear. So Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I was, I guess I was thinking that it might be worthwhile to hear from the public before we speak. Just a suggestion.
I would second that comment.
Okay. I'm very open to that. So I, that's why I went through the process to see if we had alignment on it. So if I see the head nods, we'll go with that. Okay, so at this point, I'll open the floor to Commissioner Stein if he would like to make any comments. Or is he present?
Yes.
Mayor, yes, he is. We will, and we are now.
First of all, I'd like to say that I do feel my comments were intemperate or unfortunate. And I have personally apologized to the people who have contacted me with a few exceptions. And I have written a letter of public apology in the letters to the editor of The Independent. And I'm currently composing a letter to send to the East Bay Times. I would also like to apologize to the city, I guess. The comments were my own and nowhere reflect any city, other planning commissioners, city council or staff opinions or positions. I believe that Livermore should have inclusionary housing, a broad range of housing types to serve all segments of the community. I also believe that as a planning commissioner, it's my role to treat the public with respect, compassion and be willing to meet their expectations. And again, I apologize if I have not done that. I was accused of making remarks that were disrespectful. making remarks that were disrespectful to service workers and low-income people. That was not my intent. Some background, I myself have parents who were immigrants. I grew up in a one-bedroom apartment. I worked my way through college, working as a busboy, waiter, dishwasher, and short-order cook at various resorts. And a banquet waiter in New York City. My children, my daughter, one daughter worked as a welcoming ambassador for a restaurant. And my son worked as a waiter at a Mexican restaurant and a night clerk at an all-night gas station. So I I do understand the and respect the talents and abilities and ability to cope of people who are lower on the economic scale and are service workers dealing with the public. Overall, I think, to some extent, I was misinterpreted. I do support inclusionary housing. I think it's best if affordable housing at all levels can be incorporated into the community throughout the city rather than concentrated at a single location. I have worked with Eden Housing for over thirty years and respect their ability to provide affordable housing. And the sole reason for my negative vote was that I felt the parking was inadequate. And there was no backup or fail-safe plan. I would certainly be willing to answer any questions. Or if people want to call me, I'd be happy to discuss it and offer my apologies. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I, just a real quick question. You mentioned you're writing letters and disseminating them everywhere. Did I hear that you included the council and your fellow planning commissioners on the distribution list? I wasn't clear.
I did. I asked Paul Spence and Fanny to send copies of my letter. Most of the responses were, most of the things were phone messages, and I did not receive any texts, but I received a couple of letters.
Okay. And again, we're not talking about the decision on the Eden project. So I just want to remind everybody that we're not talking about that. So is, are there any members of the council that wish to comment at this point?
We still have public commenters.
I know. I asked, is there anyone that who wants to comment at this point? Councilmember Banana.
Just have a quick question. I, I did not receive a copy of Mr. Stein's letter. And I, what I heard was that intention was to give us a copy. I don't know if anyone else received it. I did not.
I can read it to you if you'd like.
I don't know that that's necessary at this point.
But I did send it to the city, and I did actually send it to the entire city council on your email.
I didn't get it yet. I don't think anyone got it. I'm not asking that we read it now. I'm just was trying to clarify whether others got it and I didn't, or if nobody got it.
It's basically a broad letter of apology.
Okay, so I think at this point, I would like to move on to see if there are other members of the public that want to speak about the comments. And again, not about anything with regard to the decision on the project. Because do we have anybody, members of the public that want to speak on that, on the item?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is John Minow, followed by Ally Felker, followed by Ian Carlin. John Minow, please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name's John Minow with East Bay for Everyone. First, I want to thank Commissioner Stein for his comments tonight. There's an academic term called a speech act, where saying a thing is not just communicating information, but performing an action. So an example is when a bride and groom say, I do, maybe not legally, but in their eyes, and the eyes of friends and family watching, that is the moment they become married. So that word is an action. I'll come back to this concept. We know we have a long history of urban planning that is racially disparate. It was never just homeowners or landlords discriminating. It wasn't just racial covenants. It was also central decision-making. What places were seen as targets for urban renewal, eminent domain redevelopment? What places were disinvested as they lost their tax base? And allowed and became neglected. Part of being in city planning today is being aware of this history of how exclusion was built into our baked, baked into our built environment and being prepared to combat it. So I think the city's values of welcome, inclusion, and respect are some good core values that inform this work. Because we know that it's not just enough to be racially neutral. We have to combat this legacy. So in this context, I do hope that the council does not spend too much time going over the very difficult question of intentions. We know the word that was used is a racially loaded word, conjures up centuries of injustice that continue to be highly relevant today. So I would suggest that the some of the comments that were made should be considered a speech act, not just words, but action in themselves, like the groom that I mentioned. So I asked the count, I, I see, I was going to say I ask, but I see the council is taking this with the seriousness it deserves. So I urge them to think about what impact the speech act has had and will have, and what other actions can be taken to counteract its impact. Once again, thank Mr. Stein for his thoughtful comments earlier. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ally Felker, followed by Ian Carlin, followed by Veronica Stewart Long. Ally Felker, please unmute yourself.
Hello. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak towards this. And Commissioner Stein, I did want to thank you for your public apology. I had sent in an email yesterday that I sent to both the council and the planning commission. I did not receive an email back, however, I, from the the planning department. I received several from various the city council members, but I do realize that it was just yesterday. I just want to voice the same opinions. I do feel that there were a lot of loaded terms that were used in Commissioner Stein's comments, especially the repeated use of the word ghetto in regards to affordable housing. I think we're all very aware of what a great need our area has for affordable housing. And to stigmatize a group of people based off of that need, I found to be just frankly offensive. I also had a frustration with the comparison to homelessness, saying that, you know, Livermore has kind of become this place that homeless people feel that they can come to because we have the services. And the fear that that would happen with affordable housing. And again, I, I don't understand why creating affordable housing would be a bad thing and that there sort of is this mentality of, oh, we don't want those people in our city. And I just think that's, that's nothing from what I've seen from the rest of the city of Livermore. It's nothing that I, I think needs to be coming from a place of authority. So I do appreciate that this matter is being taken seriously. And I, I ask that we continue to look both inward and outward to see how our words are affecting the way our city looks and is represented. Thank you so much for your time. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
The next speaker is Ian Carlin, followed by Veronica Stewart Long. Ian Carlin, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So thank you, councilmembers. So listening to what Commissioner Stein said, and while I understand that he is sorry, I don't think he still understands the fullness of what he said. He made lots of comments that were related to class and all of the negative things he said in regards to such matter. However, not once did I hear a mention of the word race in any way. The term ghetto in the U.S. is, refers often to disparately African-American and poor areas. Historically, it's been meant to marginalize Jewish communities and signify various areas that had them from its coining as well through the Holocaust. And, you know, it's personally very offensive to me that he didn't even go and argue or think about it, having family members who were part of the Holocaust. So if he has not had the time or effort to go think about how these words that he's using could be placed in context and how they could offend people, how can we trust him to represent us in the planning commission? Especially in the case where where he's in a city that historically has redlining and other racially disparate policies. You know, it just boggles my mind that, you know, giving an apology without thinking through all of the impacts and the history was the route taken. It's fairly disturbing. I, you know, feel like all he did was himself in his own shoes and his own family's shoes, which is good, but in the first step towards empathy. But part of what it is, is about being representative of the city is thinking about about the whole community, both those here, as well as those who have been included for historical fiscal or other reasons. One thing that really really combined is, you know, putting a hundred thirty-ish affordable housing units in the most highly desirable parts of downtown is a way to make amends for the way we've treated underserved people in the community, whether it's class or race. And it's not not meant to create a segregated, anything. It's an attempt to be more inclusionary. And after fifteen years to think we should discriminate and push back on on something would help those relations is just my, just my, thank you.
The last speaker is Veronica Stewart Long. Veronica Stewart Long, please unmute yourself.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Are we having technical difficulty here?
Mayor, it appears the speaker is having some technical difficulties.
So we can come back and she needs to, again, we're focused on the comments and nothing to do with the decision. So I think at this point, we'll come back to the council. I see a number of hands raised, and I would ask Commissioner Stein to continue to be present in case there are questions for you. So let's see, Councilmember Kik has raised first.
Yeah, so I want to start my comments off talking about the difference between accountability and council culture and impact versus intent. Intent matters, we know, but impact matters more. And what I heard in an apology was, I'm sorry that you misunderstood my comments. And I don't think that was really taking account for the actions that were said. The impact of those words are very strong. As someone who used to be an elected official, as someone who is now serving at the pleasure of the council, should know better that those words have meaning. So in taking responsibility for our actions as council members, as elected officials, as representatives, we need to understand that the impact we make with our words is far stronger than the intent that's behind them. And the apology needs to come for the impact. And the apology should not ever blame the listener for misunderstanding their intent, which is, you know, what I wanted to start off with. Also, I think it's important that we, you know, there have been calls for Stein to resign, lots of them in my inbox. I think it's important that we talk about what does that mean in, in how we, you know, view progressive discipline as we focus on doing better as a community? Do we just automatically say someone maybe made a mistake? And therefore, they're gone? I'm not sure that's the position that I would like to take, but I would like to be very clear about what it means when we hold somebody accountable.
Oh, could I, could I just, just point out that that is not on the agenda with respect to deciding what that level of discipline, that's not on the agenda, that would have to be a separate agendized item.
Understood. It would be a separate agendized item, but I did want to recognize that that is a request that's being made in the community. And that I've heard, I've heard that request. And so this is me calling out that I think it's important that we just talk about what does accountability mean to us as a council? And just want to make it clear that the words that I heard in the apology were very much not as reflective as I would have liked. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, I, I believe I'm going to be somewhat longer than Councilmember Kik. I do want to begin by thanking Commissioner Stein for his apology. And it will form part of the council's deliberations. I also want to note that this item comes following a detailed report out from the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. Now, each working group meeting begins with a reminder of values. And one of those values is to assume positive intent from others. Now, for me, that means remembering that we all make mistakes and we all deserve the chance to explain, to apologize, to learn and grow. That only happens when we listen to each other with compassion, but it also means keeping appropriate consequences in mind. So to turn to the event itself, at the April twentieth Planning Commission meeting, Commissioner Stein made three points that I wish to address. So first of all, I'm going to do some quoting. I, I listened to this a number of times. He talked about Livermore as, quote, "the center of homelessness in the valley." He went on to say that he did not want Livermore to become the, quote, "go-to place in the valley for affordable housing." And finally, he used the word ghetto to refer to the proposed Eden Development. And in each case, he spoke in his capacity as an appointed official to make statements about our communal, communal identity that run counter to our stated values. We're striving to be a welcoming, inclusive city. And I hope that doesn't mean that we welcome only the right kind of people, because how many of us would truly qualify as a member of the right kind of people club? So now let me speak to each point in order. First of all, we, we value Livermore's relationship with our neighboring cities as we work to care for our unsheltered community members. By collaborating, Livermore, Dublin, and Pleasanton can pool resources to improve the lives of people without housing. Together, we act as a stronger voice to advocate for funding. Now, who are the unsheltered people? Most are from Livermore, in fact. They are part of our community. They are not strangers. But regardless of who they are, regardless of where they come from, caring for people who have little or nothing is both a pragmatic and a moral imperative. Pragmatically, that care costs less than waiting for an emergency or ignoring the inevitable consequences to us all. Morally, I'm proud to live in a city that is, however imperfectly, working to care for those who are in need. Now, referring to our attitude towards affordable housing, Commissioner Stein said, "We need to do our fair share," I'm quoting that, "we need to do our fair share, but we don't need to do the entire valley's fair share." Now, that implies there is something wrong with people who make less than a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year, which is about what it takes to afford a home these days. It also implies that whether Livermore builds homes or not depends on the actions of others. What other cities do or do not What other cities do or do not do is on them. What we do is on us. And that means acting ethically and with integrity with regard to filling our own housing obligations. Now, finally, a word about about the word ghetto, along with another appalling word that I've seen in my emails, slums. For many of a certain age, these are simply neutral terms used to describe particular places. And I know this because as I've had conversations over the weekend, I've mentioned this word to certain people and they've looked at me with a deer in the headlights look that says, ah, that could have been me. And I haven't said that out loud because they don't want it to be them. But this is a matter of talking to people about what worked at one time and no longer works at this time. They're no longer neutral terms and they're not acceptable, except in certain historical contexts. Words, however, are easy to learn or unlearn. What concerns me here are the attitudes that underlie the words. Both words refer to places for those people, the ones that the rest of us don't want to live among us. And both words stigmatize the people as much as the places themselves. In the U.S., slums exist because of redlining practices, predatory real estate practices, discriminatory bank loans and poorly maintained rental properties. They exist because some landlords buy property and allow it to deteriorate. They exist because it is expensive to be poor. People who live in slums are kept there by poverty and predatory practices. Ghetto is an Italian word that originates in the early sixteenth century and was used to label the place allotted to Venetian Jews. It's the place, in fact, that in The Merchant of Venice, Shylock lived. The play, he may be fictional, but the place was assuredly not. During World War Two, the Nazis confined Jews to ghettos prior to removing them to the death camps, with the Warsaw Ghetto being the most notorious. And in the new in the U.S., we at local, state and federal level carved out areas of our large cities where poor people lived. And by the mid twentieth century, the ghetto was the place where we warehoused black people. No one chooses to live in a ghetto. Rather, people are forced to live there because they're not allowed to live elsewhere. Both ghettos and slums exist to house the people the rest of us reject. The shame of the ghetto, the shame of the slum is not on those who live in them, but on those who create them. And that shame lies lies not in the words themselves. It lies in what the words imply about the people that the rest of us relegate to those places. Now, in thinking about how to go forward with Commissioner Stein's remarks, I want to return to the underlying principles of the Equity and Inclusion Working Group. We all make mistakes. We all deserve a chance to learn, to understand and to grow. While I have no doubt that Commissioner Stein cares about Livermore, I do not see this as a simple matter of poor word choice. I also believe there is an extra obligation upon elected and appointed officials. And therefore, I want to make sure that we treat this matter with the seriousness it deserves. I don't know what the actions are going forward, but I do look forward to hearing my the rest of my colleagues' thoughts on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you. I think you're going to hear many of the same points that the Vice Mayor just brought up. So I'm going to focus on the comments that Mr. Stein made at the April twenty twentieth Running Commission meeting that I found troubling. First, he asserted that Livermore has become the, quote, go to place in the valley for the homeless. Second, he repeated that assertion when he said that, quote, Livermore has become the center of homelessness in the valley. This is simply not true. I have been to the encampment many times. And one question I always ask is where are you from? At least seventy-five percent of the time, the answer is, I'm from Livermore. I think those who provide services to the homeless would agree. The majority of the homeless in Livermore are from Livermore. This is where they feel comfortable and this is their home. He then extended this bias to include affordable housing, saying that he, quote, didn't want to didn't want that to happen, meaning Livermore becoming the go to place with respect to affordable housing, unquote. And we, quote, need to do our fair share, but don't need to do the valley's fair share, unquote. Housing to serve below market needs has been allocated to each and every community in California. These are the RENA numbers and they are set by the state. Livermore has not met our numbers, nor have our neighbors in the valley. Further, building more than our share of below market housing does not alleviate any neighboring community from their obligation to meet their RENA numbers. The foregoing is troubling, but pales in comparison to his declaring that he, quote, doesn't want to see downtown become a ghetto of affordable housing, unquote, and cautions Livermore to, quote, not create a ghetto of affordable housing, unquote. Livermore is striving to become a more welcoming, accepting and more inclusive community for and of all people. That includes people of all income levels. Additionally, Mr. Stein characterized lower income level workers as driving pickups, vans, box trucks, dump trucks, horses and landscape trailers. I found this generalization of the future tenants of an affordable housing project and the expectation that a ghetto would be the result to be highly offensive. Mr. Stein's comments on Tuesday, April twentieth have led me to the conclusion that his qualification to continue on the planning commission is in question. Frankly, from this information, including Mr. Stein's actual words, he has failed to follow our norms and values. Thank you.
Councilmember Banano.
So I'll just say that I I agree with many of the comments made by Council Vice Mayor Monroe and Councilmember Carling. You know, this is, I I'm very saddened by this and very troubled as well. It's also very, find it kind of very difficult to be in this position of judging people's intent, judging the quality of Mr. Stein's apology. I do thank him for doing that. I think it's a very difficult thing to do to make a public apology. I I also think that we're all very capable of saying hurtful things, whether out of ignorance, out of intention, out of with knowledge and forethought, I think, you know, we're all capable of saying hurtful things and what we do going forward, I think, is what we really should be focusing on. So we've deliberated the the words, which I think were extremely offensive. I think the comparisons, the very erroneous comparisons to things like Cabrini-Green, which if you've at all have any knowledge of some of the really infamously bad public housing projects that were built in the sixties and seventies, which others have commented on what their intention was, which was not to lift people up, but was to basically segregate them in the least healthy, least quality environments in cities so that the more desirable places could be kept for others. So I mean, I think the comparisons, especially given Mr. Stein's description of his past experience with those, the fact that he couldn't see the difference between this project and could associate those projects with this one is one of the things that I find the most troubling now. This is so not that. And this is so the project that we're not discussing, but the project about which these comments came out is support is supported by our values. It is consistent with many of the other services and other things we we do in the city, as we heard earlier in our meeting this evening. You know, the the I'm proud to be in a city that wants to do, you know, more than its share to bring people up and to give people opportunity. I think everyone should have the opportunity to thrive here and not where we say they should be. We just need to provide opportunity. So with that said, I I I think moving forward is what we should try to take something that's troubled us and disturbed us all and, you know, asking Mr. Stein to resign, relieving him of his seat on the commission. I don't know what, you know, it makes a statement about, you know, how much we disagree with it, but I don't want this to be performative. I want to understand whether we, what action we take can actually make a positive impact going forward, if that's possible. So sorry, this is a little disjointed. I just I just feel that some of the thoughts I had, others have already said. And I would, I guess, leave it there and like to hear what the mayor says and also start to discuss, you know, the go forward steps since we all sort of have similar feelings about what was said. So I'll I'll leave it there.
Councilmember Kick.
Back on moving forward. Councilmember Banano and I worked on our norms and values document. So I have a couple of questions about that. I know it's not the on the agenda, but Jason, we talked about that I I would be able to bring up maybe one piece of that tonight because it's related to the topic at hand.
So you can make reference to it. It's just that's an action item that will be pending for May third City Council, but you can speak to what you're presenting at that meeting.
Okay, so I won't. We're just to clarify to the rest of the council, we're not here to deliberate what we may or may not agree on on that norms and values document. But we did work on that and that document does talk about accountability in there, holding each other accountable for our actions. But we don't really describe what that looks like. So maybe that's something we can think about to to talk about on on May third. It also talks about I had it up here earlier. Communication with respect for people and ideas. And so I'm wondering, when we go over that norms and values document, Mark, once we agree on what those norms and values are, how do those get to get communicated to our various working groups, commissions, et cetera?
Clearly, the council can give direction on that, but that could very much be part of not only the initial orientation, but as part of yearly or ongoing reminders and trainings. So there's several ways to do that.
Okay. And so to be clear, our commissions are chosen by us. They serve at the pleasure of us. They could be removed by us, but I do believe in progressive discipline. So I would I would like to have a conversation about making those norms and values when we get there on May third very, very clear so that if it happens again, we have a way to move forward. I'm very emotional about this and not surprisingly to many of you because this is just truly classism at its at its worst. My position at this virtual table has been questioned because I'm not a homeowner and because I don't have a PhD like my fellow council members up here. So the impact of these words is really, really cutting. And I want to make it very clear to the community that our 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 council and our city staff has been nothing but welcoming to me. But what I heard the commissioner say was the kinds of comments that come to me on a weekly basis about how people of certain classes and people of certain incomes aren't welcome. And I think it's really important that we make, we have a longer discussion on May third about what accountability means and about what respect means. And and what maybe an appropriate apology might look like if this were to happen again. So I apologize for my less than super professional decorum at this moment. But I hope that we can move forward and act with integrity and lead by example, which is what one of our norms and values states.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Monroe.
So I I I I just want to say to to Councilmember Kick that I think you have nothing to apologize for, that I think what this may or may not help you personally, but I think that the fact that this is something that affects you personally on a on a day, I know if it's a daily basis at this point, but I know it certainly was during your campaign, speaks to a larger problem. And so I want us to think about that a little bit. Both, you know, what we're talking about right now is Commissioner Stein's comments. But I think part of the reason that those comments and Commissioner Stein, forgive me for putting words in your mouth or thoughts in your head. But and this is to some degree based on my conversations with people over the weekend. I think that this is this is part of what implicit bias looks like. It's because we don't think about who people that don't have that don't, I I mean, I've said this before. I haven't a mortgage that's just about paid off and is half the cost of of what a three bedroom house rents for, a three bedroom apartment rents for in Livermore. My husband's retired with a pension. You know, if that's my assumed reality, going into another assumed reality is difficult. I said it's expensive to be poor. There's a great Carrie Pratchett quote that gets used about buying boots and how rich people can buy an expensive pair of boots and it will last them for years and years. So it costs them fifty pounds or whatever, because, you know, Brits to buy an expensive pair of boots. But a poor person is going to have to spend ten bucks on boots and then it will have cardboard soles and then they'll have to buy another pair. But they can't, they they don't, they don't. So I I'm getting feedback here. I guess no one else is hearing it. They don't have the money, the fifty pounds at front. So it's more expensive for them to be poor. I guess what I'm wondering is, what do, you know, we have a problem about what do we do with this specific situation and with this particular person who you know, under the best scenario, you're made a very, very bad mistake. And under the worst, it's really just not not, you know, I I I won't even say what the worst is. What do we do going forward there? But also, how do we think about a culture in which that can be where where we're not thinking about, where we're thinking differently, where we're changing the culture? So I guess that's what those are the questions that are on my mind. I do think this goes back to this Group A of equity and inclusion. I mean, this is precisely the work that Councilmember Carling and I are are doing with the working group.
Okay, my turn?
Oh, why not?
Okay, I'll just try and be succinct. I think Commissioner Stein's comments were highly inappropriate, uninformed and deeply hurtful. And a sincere apology is definitely to the community and everyone, certainly in order. And I think an attempt was made, but I finally frank find it lacking. I noticed there was no attempt to walk by the denigrating comments with respect to the proposed project, no attempt whatsoever. It was a doubling down on, I believe, in inclusionary housing, which means the way it was used, the way I'd interpret it, means not such projects. That's what I heard. So what I would suggest and just as Vice Mayor Monroe you brought up, and if you and Councilmember Carling are amenable to it, I would suggest, since it is an equity and inclusion kind of topic, I would suggest, since it is an equity and inclusion kind of topic, that you consider a, uh, possibly recommending to us uh, what the future steps are. And that if that involves talking with Commissioner Stein, that's it. I think at this moment, uh, the question is, do we have future items to agendize? And how do we, as was brought up earlier, how do we assure that the other, uh, committees that we have kind of understand uh, what we're dealing with here and don't fall into, uh, non-thinking uttering of words. I think, um, saying that this was intemperate is, is way past that. So that, that's my thoughts. That's my suggestion as to how we might move forward. And I see, uh, immediately, uh, councilmember Carling raised his hand and, and then I see, uh, councilmember Kick. So, councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I suppose we could do that. I, I don't, I'm a little perplexed. I thought we were going to decide tonight. It seems to me I'm not one to kick the can down the road, as you know. Um, and I certainly am prepared this evening to make a decision as to how I think things should go forward. But apparently I misunderstood what this topic was about, other than just discussing it amongst ourselves.
Uh, no, I, I think, I may.
I thought we were going to reach some conclusion with respect to Mr. Stein's path forward.
Oh, well, as I pointed out, a certain levels of that are not on the agenda and we are unable to. And that's what's pointed out to me by the city attorney. Uh, and I may at this point ask the city attorney to weigh in as to what we can and can't do this evening.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alonkala. The agenda item on here was listed to confirm your commitment to your culture of welcome, inclusion, and respect, and discuss the comments made by Judge, uh, by Commissioner Stein at the planning commission on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, as well as complaints. There's, this was not scheduled for an action item. Um, if the council wants to give direction, it can come back for a future item. Uh, you can take certain, give certain direction today. Um, one direction would be, uh, let's talk about the alpha through the omega. So the end was one end result that's been, um, discussed by the council today, which is the removal of Commissioner Stein. Um, that would have to be agendized as its own item at a future council meeting, which can be done at a special meeting. Um, but that would be the appropriate way to handle that. Um, if we look at the alpha, if there's another situation, which is to have a counseling session, you can give direction today as the council, mayor, Mr. Mayor, you can give direction to your equity inclusion subcommittee to have a conversation. And you also have the opportunity to continue the conversation at your May third continuing workshop, as was mentioned by councilmember Kick today. So you have a variety of options as far as path forward. Um, but as far as a definitive statement to remove him, I don't think that's on the plate today based upon your agenda description. But should that be the direction of council, that can be accommodated at a future meeting.
Uh, and so thank you, and councilman Carling, I just wanted to have that background. And what I was suggesting is that the, uh, the subcommittee on equity and inclusion could recommend the path forward. And, uh, we can get that agendized for our next meeting. But we can't take certain actions tonight. And so, um, but there are those that we can. So then with that, did that help explain the constraints on us?
No.
Okay. So what is your, uh, what is your uh, suggestion?
My suggestion is that we, um, that we remove Mr. Stein from the planning commission. I, I am troubled with, you know, what's an appropriate apology? I have no idea. And you even said that you thought his apology was not sincere. I never even have seen an apology. And somebody else suggested that we have, um, disciplinary action, you know, progressive disciplinary action to assure it doesn't happen again. Well, what is, what is it? What would we prevent, what could he do next? That would either offend us or we would kick the can down the road again. I like Ms., uh, councilmember Kick's point about impact. And I think it's had a huge impact. You can see it's had a new, huge impact on all of us, including the folks that we've gotten emails from. My opinion is that Mr. Stein should be removed.
I, there's a distinction I'm trying to draw here between voicing the opinion and the legality of any action we can take tonight. And I heard the city attorney say, we cannot take that action tonight. We would have to have a special agendized meeting. And, uh, city attorney, did I understand you correctly?
Correct. So your item today does not actually indicate that you're going to remove Commissioner Stein. That may be one of the results you want to pursue following this meeting, but that would be an item agendized for a future meeting to actually consider his removal at that time, um, should the council be so inclined.
Right. So councilmember Carling, do you agree with what the city attorney said, or do you disagree?
Well, I suppose I need to agree since he's the, her legal counsel, but I, I don't, I'm not going to change my opinion about the final outcome here.
No, that's fine. We're, we're trying to get to a legal plan of action. And I think, if I may, part of the reason why we're here tonight on this agenda is the need for people to distinguish between their opinion and what we can legally do properly. That's very important. So, uh, councilmember, uh, if, if you are, want to say more, go ahead, councilmember Carling, but otherwise councilmember Kick has her hand up.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I have, I have strong opinions about what was said, but I I, I do want to talk a little bit about the importance of, uh, accountability and, and progressive discipline because what I, what was done was absolutely inappropriate, but there could be the argument, uh, well, nobody told me it was, it wasn't okay for me to use that language. So I think this is very clear. Now we've said, this is absolutely inappropriate. Don't do it again. There are other problems with the meeting that we can't discuss today because it's not agendized, but boy, do I have some other problems I'll bring up on the twenty-fourth. Um, that speak to his fitness for this office. But that's not what we are allowed to talk about today. So language only, totally inappropriate. I think maybe this is a, a, a very fair and open warning that language like this is not tolerated on the council by any of our appointed, um, commissioners or, um, you know, staff that we have control over. You know, we, it's really only, it's really only Mark and Jason, we could say, um, have, have control over language like that. Um, and it, it does go back to policy, right? So what is our policy on, on, um, reprimanding and removing commissioners? I have not seen a policy that tells me what we can and cannot do right now, which is why I would like to move that we have a very specific discussion on the third a, about how we deal with these types of incidents, um, in the future. Jason, I see you unmuted.
Yes, councilmember Kick. So to reiterate, um, as was mentioned earlier this evening, um, all advisory body members, with the exception of two, serve at the pleasure of the city council. The two that are exceptions are governed by, um, different regulations within the government code and have different means for removal. One being the housing authority and the other being the library board. All of the advisory body members do serve at the pleasure of the council, but you are correct. Um, the council has not previously weighed in by what process they would remove a, an advisory body member whose, um, um, behavior did not reflect the values of the city council.
Would that be something that we could give direction to you today to say we would like to see some sort of standard policy a, a, about some sort of progressive discipline policy for commissioners so that we can prevent this kind of situation from being so, um, unclear about what we can and cannot do in the moment?
So that is one path that's available to the council today, which is to provide direction to city staff, um, to provide recommendations back to you as a council, should you want to consider some alternative other than immediately going to removal, um, or to give a direction that if such behavior did occur in the future, that staff is directed, um, when brought forward by the mayor or majority of the city council to place an item on a council agenda for removal. So all those are within your purview, but again, today's the direction to develop something to return to the city council.
Councilmember Banano, before I go further down this line, I've been informed that uh, the person who had the technical difficulties earlier would like to read, uh, try again in, uh, public comment. So after councilmember Banano, I'll go back to the public comment. And then we'll come back to, um, uh, definitive conclusion of what we're going to do on next steps.
So let me try to help, help here. So what I'm hearing is I, I believe what councilmember Kick's said earlier is true, that commissioners serve at the pleasure of the council. So I might, my understanding from everything I've just heard, if we chose to pursue removing Mr. Stein from the commission, we would say that, give that direction tonight, and it would be agendized on a upcoming meeting, special meeting, some, some meeting. So that would be a step. What I also heard was, even though I think it's within our authority to do this, no one said it isn't. I heard that we may not have a, a good enough process described for when and how to do this. Um, the question is, is that a prerequisite for some council members to move forward, or is it something that we should do in parallel, um, while dealing with this specific issue? I'll also say, I think at some point, if we're, we, we should take into account that I'm getting a little uncomfortable continuing to be discussing over and over the same thing. You know, in a public meeting with Mr. Stein, who we, you know, has to listen to us over and over again, say how inappropriate, how troublesome, how, all, all these things. I mean, I think at some point we have made our voices clear about what we think and we need to take some action rather than just keep coming back and saying the same thing. I, I think it's, comes a point, it's a little bit unfair to keep putting someone through this. Um, we have actions we can take. We should take the action we believe is the right one. And I, I think, I guess I would like to see us sort of converge on taking those next steps, whatever they're going to be.
So I, what I said we'll do is open the public forum and we come back to that. And then we'll entertain the motions and decide what we're going to do. Okay, so with that, uh, I understand, uh, we have some public comment, uh, people left.
Mr. Honorable Mayor, Veronica Stewart Long, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, I was well into my comments before I realized I wasn't unmuted. Um, I, um, I wrote all this not knowing actually what, um, what was said. Um, so I thought it's sort of interesting tonight that this was on the agenda, but never defined and even discussion started without defining it. And I've picked up, um, through, through people's comments, um, specific concerns. Um, I attended the April twentieth meeting and I heard the comments made by Commissioner Stein. The first thing he said was that he supports inclusionary housing. That was his first statement. Um, I heard him speak from a position of a person living near an apartment complex where working families live. He described the parking challenges that he observes on a daily basis. He expressed his concern for the difficulty he sees that they have to manage. He went on to ask about particular aspects of the Eden apartment complex specifically related to quality of life and safety for the future residents. He asked about backup power sources for the all-electric system. He also asked about specifics like access and security. He then spoke to city planning. And I think this is where things became, language became problematic from the sounds of things. Um, he, and affordable housing in general. He tied back to his first statement, he reiterated his support for affordable housing and that he thinks it would be better to have it dispersed throughout the community instead of having it concentrated in project areas. He stepped back from the city planning and took a regional view and mentioned something that I've heard since I was young, growing up here in Livermore, and that's that Livermore does more than other towns around us. Um, and it made sense what he said, that, um, he wanted to make sure that this housing that we're seeing is for our workforce, that there's some way for it, Livermore residents to, um, be, get preference for this housing. Um, and the Eden housing person answered with the scoring system answer. It was well past eleven PM when, uh, in a four-hour-long meeting by that time. And I saw him uphold his duties and exercise diligence in asking clarification. Um, I guess maybe what councilmember Monroe mentioned about the people who did the deer in the headlights. I, I thought his language was a little dicey, but I understood what he was saying because of what he had demonstrated earlier with his comments. Um, and I really heard him talking about things that people didn't talk about because they were afraid to ask. So, um, I'm about to run out of time. Um, I do have some questions, like, is there a transcript?
You, uh, you know, I think you, time is up.
Okay.
Uh, do we have any bells, anybody else who would like to speak at this moment?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public comment. So with this, um, you know, I think we've made our feelings clear. I agree with councilmember Banano. It's time to now decide where we go forward. I've heard the city attorney say certain actions are precluded this evening. But what we can do, what I would like to suggest, if there's somebody who'd like to make a motion along these lines, it's very clear to me that we need to agendize this so that we are, um, free to cover the whole spectrum, that we as a council, um, then decide what we're going to do and that we do it without the, um, awkwardness that we have now. And I would, uh, say that we do have to address whether we have the proper thought process, procedures. We have to get clear on what it means for, uh, whether you get a second chance or not. And we then have to, uh, discuss, you know, what the ultimate action we might take, which is removal. And we need to notify the public that that's what we're going to do and that that's on the table. And, uh, deal with it. So I suggest the next step is a, I'll just say a full spectrum meeting. Agenda item, that that's the way through it. I, I, I see, uh, people that have different points of view as to how, what the, uh, action we should take. And we need to have a meeting in which we can adequately discuss that. So that's where I'm thinking. I see, uh, Vice Mayor Monroe, you have your hand up.
Yes, I actually had it up, uh, prior to your comments. Um, so I'm happy to make that motion. But before that, I want to strongly object to, to the misinterpretive, misinterpretation of the, my statement about deer in the headlights from, uh, Ms., uh, Ms., uh, Long, I'm sorry, I just lost Long, Stuart Long. Um, uh, the point there was that, that there, that is a moment for talking it through, not for accepting the language. And I just want to make that very clear. I do not appreciate having my words misunderstood. Uh, with that, um, I'm very happy to, uh, um, uh, make the motion to say we go forward, uh, I'm sorry, misconstrued, which is, uh, um, uh, to make a motion to, uh, to agendize a special meeting. Um, I think that this is a complicated issue and there are a variety of opinions. Um, what else do I have to do to make that happen, uh, Mr. City Attorney? Is that?
So, Vice Mayor Monroe, this is your city attorney, Jason Alonkala. Um, what I'm gathering from the discussion so far is that the mayor's soliciting What I'm gathering from the discussions so far is that the mayor's soliciting, looks like you're interested in making a motion to give direction to staff to agendize a future action item by the city council to consider the removal of Planning Commissioner Stein. At that meeting, you can do less than that, but we'd have to identify that that is the actual, one of the ultimate items you can do is to remove somebody. So I think within that, you can have, do something less. But if there is something specific that you'd like to consider that is something less, it'd be helpful to include that in the motion, direction to staff.
So my motion, so I did not intend it to be a motion that was, was only stating, I, it would be, is there a way to state that such that it's full range of options from, you know, write a nice apology to?
Yeah, just so they, yeah, just do it that way. It's a full range of option.
Fine.
Up to and including removal.
Sure.
Do I have a, I see councilmember Kick.
Um, it's not agendized, so I can't talk about it, but there are other issues that should be considered if we have that full removal.
We have a, we, we have a motion, and I think at this point, we need to see if we have a second or not.
Can we specify that I would second if this was after our May 24th meeting, or we could actually have a conversation about some of the other issues?
Yes, you can, I think you can amend the motion to, I see the city attorney's in there, but I think how we get into the process here is, the first motion was to agendize it, then we can come back and say when. That would be the simplest.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion, I know we have a, a second motion in the works, but can we have a roll call? If, is there any discussion on this, and can we proceed to a roll call?
About the next meeting.
Pardon?
I wanted to be clear that we're talking about the May 3rd meeting, right?
The first part that councilmember Monroe made was that we get it on a meeting. And what councilmember Kick is now suggesting that we pick the date. But the first thing is that we're gonna go, we're gonna get it on to a meeting. Can we get that far at least?
No.
Okay.
I thought it was May 3rd.
Why don't we have an amending motion?
To make it May 3rd?
Someone make an amending motion, and we'll, we'll vote on it, and then.
Nobody seconded it.
Yes.
No, look, look, if we, if, I, I'll ask the city attorney on this, but I would suggest let's try and get through this. The first step is, do we want to have a meeting up to and including removal or not? And then we can talk about the date. But can we, it strikes me as we do it in the two pieces, but if, but if we want to get it, if we want to argue the date first, I, I mean, it doesn't make any sense, but let's, can I get some advice from the city attorney here?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. This is your city attorney, Jason Aloncola. The motion on the floor before the city council is just as you articulated, option to consider how to respond to this with Mr. Stein up into, up, including up to removal. That was the action, that, that was the motion made by Vice Mayor Monroe and seconded by councilmember Carling. There was an indication that Carling believed that there was a date included in the original. So the first question is to Vice Mayor Monroe, did you have a date in your motion?
I did not. I specifically did not, precisely because I think that, that, you know, if it's, there are a number of options.
So with that,
I'm not gonna second that motion then.
Very good. That's why I was probing here. So we have a motion on the floor with no second now.
So there, I see councilmember Kick, you have your hand up.
I, I mean, I'll second that, but that's not why my hand is up.
But I missed that, you said you'll second it.
I'll second it, but that's not why my hand is up. So, so just, just do a roll call and come back to me.
We have a, look, we have a motion, we have it seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? I see no discussion on the motion. Wait a minute, okay, councilmember Monroe, are you wanting to discuss the motion?
I, I do, and so I am wondering, we, we have a discussion specifically around actions with respect to Commissioner Stein. My thought would be that, you know, if it, if it is possible to expand the range of that, and I'm assuming it's not city attorney, correct?
Expand the range, you've already covered the whole range.
No, I'm sorry. I, I, I understand the, I, I, what I'm trying to do is find a way. Never mind, I withdraw my comment. All, all the preceding two minutes never happened.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on the motion? No. Okay, I'll call for a roll call now, please.
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. So we've decided to have the meeting unanimously. Now, I, we're gonna, we gotta go obvious next step, and I see councilmember Kick, now proceed, and then followed by councilmember Carling.
Okay, so my concern is that I don't think it's appropriate to have a meeting where we're still constrained by what topics we're allowed to talk about. And in a couple of the letters from constituents, to me, there were some other problems pointed out about the behavior in the meeting, and some problems about behavior in other meetings that I feel we should have the full opportunity to talk about before we were to make some sort of decision like removal. And because a lot of those are related to something that's on our agenda on May 24th, I would suggest that we discuss it after that time so that we have the full opportunity to have a discussion without accidentally talking about a housing development before it's appropriate.
Okay, I see city attorney would like to make a comment.
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Kick, the agenda item that the council is creating could be as broad or as narrow as it would like to include. Right now, you have a broad basis based upon the motion made by Monroe and seconded by you, councilmember Kick, to consider the removal of John Stein, Planning Commissioner. So if you want to have that to not only consider the words that he mentioned that you discussed here today, but to range, broaden it to his performance overall, you can. Again, getting to the council's authority to remove a planning commissioner. A planning commissioner serves at the pleasure of the city council. You don't have to remove a council member, I'm sorry, a planning commissioner for cause. So, if that helps your conversation here today.
Councilmember Kick, you still have your hand up?
To clarify, Jason, if I were to say something like, I, I believe X vote was inappropriate on X project, on Y project because of A, B, and C, even though that we have, as a council, have not seen said project, would that be problematic?
No, because again, you're not, you're not making a decision based upon the project itself. You're making a decision based upon the performance of a planning commissioner. Now, again, you don't need to have a reason to remove somebody, but if you'd like to discuss that, you can actually include that within the scope of your agenda item you're currently creating. Well, you've already created, but you can expand that.
Okay. As, as long as we can talk about anything, instead of today, which was very much just about the, the equity language, not the technical issues and some other past behavior that's problematic.
So you're suggesting then that you, based on what you just heard from the city attorney, that you're okay with the date suggested by councilmember Carling? Is that what I just heard?
On, on the face of it, I'm okay with the date suggested by councilmember Carling. I do not want any actions taken by us at a later date to be misconstrued or, or mislabeled as actions that they are not. I, I don't want any decisions made on May 24th to be mis, mislabeled or misused by our community for something that it's not, which is why I want to push it out farther.
Right, I think, I may say this. The chance that certain members of the community won't misconstrue them is like nil. Because they have certain agendas. However, I think what I heard you say is you want to minimize it. So that's, that's it. So, okay, councilmember Carling.
I, I see, there's no, there's no way we can prevent whatever we say from being misconstrued, and I will move that we have this discussion on May 3rd.
Okay, wait, do we have a second? Did I hear a second?
Yes, I second.
Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Kick, you have your hand up. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Passage unanimously. So, thank you. I see the city attorney would like to comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to add one additional comment. This has been a very challenging conversation for the council, very clearly. However, if you are going to consider a specific action taken by Com, by Commissioner Stein at a particular meeting beyond the April 20th, the April 20th meeting, it will be helpful for you to identify that in the record so we know what information you need to have presented at the May 3rd meeting. Again, again, you don't need to, you don't need to remove a, a someone for cause, and a planning commissioner for cause. However, if that's where you're gonna go, and you want to have a discussion on a particular item, it would be equitable to allow that commissioner to know what is going to be called in the question so he can respond.
Okay, that makes sense, and so I will, those who want to broaden the scope of the conversation beyond the, the recent meeting that we're talking about tonight, and the comments there, please do so. Councilmember Kick.
There are a couple dates which I can give to the attorney, where the commissioner asked for a matters, which is a legislative matter, is not a legislative body. And the vote, I think should be discussed on its, its legal basis. But I'm not sure that was made clear, because we're clearly not talking about it right now.
So you do have a date or you don't have a date that you'd like to include?
I don't, I don't have the dates off the top of my head, but I could easily get them to Jason.
Okay, and city attorney, is that okay for those dates to be included in the agenda item later?
So I would request that there's, that the scope of the agenda item be expanded then to include his performance on May 20th and those comments, and other meetings as well. But it would be helpful to get those information ahead of time as far as what meetings are going to be considered, so that information can be included in the agenda item as well as shared with Commissioner Stein.
Okay, you said May, but you meant April?
So the next council meeting we have is currently, unless your council's asking for a special meeting, is your May 3rd workshop.
No, we're doing May 3rd, but you just referenced May 20th, and I think you meant April.
I did.
Oh, that's all, okay, so are we done?
Me sending the dates to Jason is appropriate, or?
Well, to the, Jason, the city clerk, just to get him in the agenda item.
Okay, they will do that, thank you.
So is that, is the broadening of this scope of this particular meeting, is that the will of the council?
Do we need to take a vote on it?
Yes, because right now, your original moving motion was just focusing on the comments you were discussing today.
Okay, need a third motion here. I don't hear a third motion.
I, I would like my motion to be that this, the agenda item is the full scope of behavior and that we move forward with policy as well. I, I don't want to start a situation where somebody on a commission does something that we don't agree with, and think is inappropriate, and then just start removing people without cause. I know that we can remove people without cause, I just don't know that we should constantly just remove people without cause, which is why I want the cause to be part of the conversation. And I think policy is important. So if, if having policy be a part of that conversation is something that we can do, great. I get that's very, very short notice for staff to give us a policy. So if Jason has any suggestions on that, this could be, you know, we deal with this commissioner on the 3rd, but on a future agenda, we talk policy about should we be removing people just willy-nilly because we're frustrated with them. I get this is absolutely not that case, this is, this is against, the comments were against our values, but I would like to protect us in the future from any accusation that we just remove people that we disagree with.
Okay, so we, we now have a third concept on the table for future agenda item, which is to discuss a policy matter. So that is a third item. The, what we have so far is an item to consider the breadth of Commissioner Stein's performance on April 20th. Bring that back, and that was the first motion, up to including dismissal. And that was a second motion to have that discussion on May 3rd as part of the workshop, so that can be done. We now have another concept, which was to expand the scope of that conversation to include the commissioner's performance at other planning commission meetings. Now we have a fourth concept, which is to discuss whether the city should adopt a policy. In my mind, the scope, the broadening of scope to include performance at other planning commission meetings is not currently within the call of the agenda for May 3rd. And then the fourth item, it's unclear whether that's intended to be a part of that conversation or a different conversation later on. And there's been no motion or second on those, those last two items, items three and four.
So, as I just said, we've, we've got to kind of get ourselves reined in here. And I understand the goal, but if there's, did you, free to make a motion, and then see if there's a second. Vice Mayor Monroe.
So I understand that we have a motion, we have a date. I also know that we've had some conversation following both of those things. In considering, in, in thinking about that, that conversation, here's what I'd like to see happen, I don't know that it's possible, on May 3rd.
Are you, are you prepared to make a motion at this point?
I am still discussing, I, I do not wish to make a motion.
Okay, so here's something else I noted, it's 10:59, we have to decide whether we're gonna go past 11. We have to do that. So we're gonna need a motion to go past 11.
I, I move, we go past 11 to, oh, 1 o'clock, no, just kidding. I, I move, we, we take another few minutes.
Joke around here, so do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Banano.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Kick.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Monroe.
Aye.
Mayor Warner.
Aye. Okay, we'll go past 11, but only this, I think we're gonna, we're nearly wrapping, so, okay.
All right.
I've just, I'm just suggesting we get it, we stay focused, and we're clear on what we're doing, so go ahead.
So I want to reflect what I've heard, and from that, maybe see a path forward. What I've heard is, number one, there are at least two people, councilmember Kick and me, who are uncomfortable with not having a policy, and I think I heard that from other people as in, in going forward with this. I agree. I, I, you know, I, I feel that way, I would be much more comfortable if we had a policy. So I, if it's possible to include that in this, and I understand, you know, this would be another motion or whatever, fine. Number one. Number two, it makes sense to me that if we're talking Number one. Number two, it makes sense to me that if we're talking about uh, something as serious as we're talking about this full range, Jason, did you, I mean, city attorney, did you need to speak up right now or is, or not? Am I in trouble or not?
No, I'll wait till you finish your comments.
Okay, um, then, um, it seems to me that that also is something that, uh, given the level, you know, given the seriousness with which we're moving forward, that's something else we should do. Therefore, I don't know whether this is withdrawing a motion and making a new one, but in my ideal world, I'd like to find some way to have a discussion about policy and then apply that policy in the May 3rd meeting to the full scope of, uh, Councilmember, Commissioner Stein's uh, a, action so that we can come up with a decision that we make within a policy, a, a, you know, a, a given policy, which seems to me to be the correct order to do things in. So I don't know if you, you know, how do I do that?
Well, you, you, wait, wait. Let's, first of all, we need to ask staff if that request is even feasible. So I would like city attorney and the city manager to weigh in if in fact on the date we've chosen to, to have a policy available for our consideration at that time. Is that possible?
So, Mr. Mayor, I will defer to Mark whether it's possible, but I do wanna offer a perspective. It's very challenging to create a policy and then apply it retroactively. Because you haven't given someone the understanding of what is, um, appropriate behavior. Right now, the baseline is the planning commissioner serves at the will of the city council. If you create a new policy, you can't apply it retroactively because that planning commissioner did not know what the expectations were for that particular policy. As it stands here today, the expectation is a planning commissioner serves at the will and the pleasure of the city council. So you can remove them without cause. If you wanna create a new process whereby you're going to now require cause, it has to be applied prospectively to future behaviors. With that perspective, uh, with regard to due process before the city council as having this conversation here this evening.
So I, I think, I really implore everyone to understand how things work and asking for rational, reasonable things. Let's, let's, let's get a grip. So, Councilmember Banano.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need a policy. I think, I think it, um, we, we are put in these positions to, we, we, the committee, committees and commissions serve at our pleasure. And we are put in these positions because we have the judgment and abilities to make these decisions. I think policies for something that can't possibly be bounded is just a mistake. So I'd like, that, that's my opinion. So I would not support a policy. I, I understand, I, I, I understand and respect the reasons it's being brought up. I, I just think we, we don't need it and we can proceed as we have for many years without such a policy. I, I just don't think we need it at this time.
It was pointed out, we can't do it retroactive anyway. So, uh, we can consider such policies for the future, but there's no immediate rush because it's not gonna pertain to anything.
Agreed.
So, okay, so let's, uh, Vice Mayor Monroe.
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you for the clear explanation. I withdraw my comments. I think we're good the way we are. I wanna leave it, I, I would be happy to leave it just as it is.
Okay. Councilmember Kik.
Agreed. I think after we have a discussion, maybe there could be a matters at a later time to say, how do we, how do we talk about this moving forward, but we should focus on the matter at hand. So let's just move forward with the motions that were already on the table and I believe have been, have been moved seconded and, seconded and passed.
So I think we're done with item 63. Okay, thank you. Uh, we're on to, uh, council committee reports and matters initiated by the city. Do we have anything critical or do we wanna skip this one? Councilmember Kik.
I wanted to end on a positive note. Um, I, I did my reports, you can read them, but my favorite thing I did between the previous council meeting was attend an event for Monarch Tractor, um, which is the first ever all-electric driver or optional tractor that they handed over to Carl Wenti. It's a very, very cool project that our Office of Innovation and Economic Development has been working with getting this company in here. And it was very cool. And we're doing great things, um, in our community that provide good jobs, that, you know, help us fight, uh, climate change and are just plain cool. So, um, I wanted to share that and say that it was great. You should look them up. And that is all. All my other meetings were pretty standard.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Carling, do you have anything to, you wanna report or initiate?
Since you asked, I hope this isn't too. So this is, so I got some and maybe others did too about gun safety, and I'm interested in learning more about the ordinance recently passed by the Dublin City Council regarding their implementation of additional safety standards for firearms stored in homes. The Dublin City Council was concerned about the deaths and injuries due to children accessing arms that aren't properly stored. And I, I guess I, if we could learn more about that ordinance and potentially other means that could provide additional firearm safety, for example, trigger locks, um, we might have some discussion at some future council meeting about that.
Do we have a, uh, time in which this is, you want that?
No. We have other things to do.
But we get the other heads nod on this? Okay, fine. Uh, Councilmember, anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Banano, anything?
Uh, to say that, uh, LARPD let us know that from May, March 2020 through March 2021, they had 187,000 people visit Sycamore Grove Park, which is two and a half times the normal. So good to see people out there despite the reason, maybe some of those statistics will continue. And I'll just also mention at the uh, LAVTA meeting, I sat in for Mayor Warner today. I was made aware of the fact that Valley Link Board is gonna be voting at their main meeting on the Valley Link EIR and also endorsing going, going forward with that project. So I thought that was fairly exciting. So that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Monroe.
So most of what I have is, uh, is up in that handy-dandy little, little table. I did wanna mention, uh, the homelessness subcommittee, which, uh, Councilmember Carling and I make, make up. The other thing we do together, um, had a public meeting, uh, to discuss affordable housing. Um, and it, you know, I, the details are found in the supplemental packet, but uh, I was very impressed with the work that had been done, has been done and continues to be done. I too got the information about gun safety. I, I would be happy to, uh, work to, to meet with, uh, I, I was planning on meeting with some of the, the people who sent that out. Uh, if, if I if all of us got it, should we just invite them to a meeting or, I, I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to talk about that given it's not on the agenda. Um, but I also know all of us got it. So, um, uh, so I'll stop there. Um, and I really wanted to express my appreciation to my colleagues for what's been a long, really full meeting, ending with a really difficult con, uh, conversation. I really appreciate having, uh, such, such a wonderful group of people to work with and such a wonderful staff that supports us. So thank you all very much.
Okay, uh, I've made my comments. They're in the supplemental packet. I won't reiterate them. So, uh, we are now going to adjourn to a special city council meeting on May 3rd at 5:00 PM, virtually via Zoom. Thank you.